Yeah, I can start as far as.
Good evening, Milpitas. I am Minno your 2024 Board President. Welcome to this meeting of the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Education. We appreciate your attendance and participation in our education proceedings, which align with the Ralph M. Brown Act for open meetings. Tune into our hybrid-style meetings online on either Zoom or YouTube, or in-person inside our boardroom. To review public comments can be made while you are logged onto Zoom. And if you're in-person, YouTube, however, is a listen-only option. If you are unable to do either of these, please visit our written public comments webpage for instructions on how to submit your written comment. One two-minute public comment per person is allowable for each item. We're going to move on to item seventeen, closed session announcements. Trustee John.
Thank you, President No. In closed session, the following items were completed. The Board of Trustees unanimously ratified the Superintendent's action to employ Robert Richardson II as a Certified Manager, Assistant Principal at Milpitas High School for the Innovation Campus. We also unanimously approved or ratified the Superintendent's action to employ Antonio Fuentes as a Certificate Manager Coordinator I in Adult Education Corrections. And lastly, the Board unanimously accepted the resignation of one classified manager. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee John. Moving to item eight, review and approve open session agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Scott, you catch that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and on. Open session agenda is approved. Item nine, flag salute.
Good eve- is this? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Cadet Chief Petty Officer Mendoza. And accompanying me this evening is our Call guard cadets. Commanding today is Cadet Petty Officer Verdi. Alongside him are his riflemen, Cadet Senior Chief Poiwol and Cadet Petty Officer Subi. And as for our Navy flag, we have Cadet Master Chief Veronda. Also with me from the program are Cadets Lou, DeWinby, Lynn, Mendoza J., and Cadet Liu. Call guard, parade, the colors.
Ho, ver, harch, huster, harch. Call guard, ho. Pies, hen, harch.
At this moment, I would like everyone to please rise and remove all hats and hoods. Place your right hands over your heart.
Cress, pies, hen, harch.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for the victory in justice for all.
Can, re, harch. Can, cull.
Thank you, everyone. You all may be seated.
Harch, hais. Ho, ver, harch, harch. Ho, ha, hais. Ho, ver, harch, harch. Ha, 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 harch. Harch, harch, harch. Ha, harch. Ha, harch. Pies, ho.
Thank you, cadets. Moving to item ten, comments from the public. Scott, are there any public comments at this time? Online, just to be clear. Any public comments online at this time?
We do have one public comment. Oh, yep. Yes, we have one hand raised. It went down and back up. Norma Morales. We are going to enable your audio. You'll have two minutes to speak. Please take yourself off of you. Go right ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Go right ahead, Norma.
Okay. Good evening, President Minno, Board members, Superintendent Cheryl Jordan, and Cabinet. My name is Norma Morales, and I am the SLS Supervisor of Wellbeing of Immigrant and Refugee Support. I am so proud and happy to invite you all and all of our MUSD families to attend our upcoming amazing and huge Resource Health Fair this Saturday, September seventh, at MHS from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. We will have different resources for our families, to mention some of them. We will have our Milpitas Police Department. We have our Med Back, Milpitas Fire Department, Trucks, Second Food Harvest, Back Model Unit, Medical City, and Parks and Rec. Our Milpitas Wellness Center, Help of the In-House, Adult Ed, Milpitas Library and Mobile Unit, Food Trucks, Music, and More. It is going to be an amazing event for all of our families to get resources and come together to be in community while having fun. We are going to send tomorrow flyers by Mr. Scott to all of our MUSD families, and we're looking forward to see you there. Have a wonderful evening and spread the word. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Scott, do we have any other virtual comments?
And that's the last virtual comment.
Thank you, Scott. I do have two speaker cards. I have Suzette Brahmagim.
Good evening. I'm Suzette Brahmagim, Vice President of our CSCA Union in the District. One of the consent items are of a concern. Item CII. It's on the personnel report from HR. And the employee, Kay Desu, is on the report, listed as short-term employee for HR support. There's no other description of her services. And it indicates services from July 1st to December 31st of this year. She was an HR analyst until June 30th of 2023, when she resigned and moved out of state. As of July 1st, '23, she became a short-term employee for HR support for the entire school year. But HR is now fully staffed. Five analysts, supervisor, director. So we question having another person. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Sherri Ames.
Excuse me, Board President, is this an item that's on the agenda? Or is this not on the agenda? Because she referenced an item in consent item.
She referenced a consent item that's on the agenda.
So are they speaking? So this is public comment where they speak on items that aren't on the agenda? So I just want to get clarification. So these are agenda items that are noted on the card?
Yes, so. Ideally, would you like to make the public comment when the item comes up so that we can remember? Ideally, yeah. Please proceed. Ideally.
My name is Sherri Ames. I am the CSCA President. We have another concern with consent item B, VIIII, for LND. It's a proposed agreement between Salliant Health, LLC, and MUSD. If you read the description that is included in the packet, it's pretty much word-for-word for a lot of what's in the actual job description, which was the Behavioral Intervention and Student Support Supervisor. The in-house position, which was not posted when the previous person left, had a top salary of $123,000, $124,000. It has more duties and less pay than the contract for Salliant. Even with statutory benefits, it would nowhere near come to what the agreement is, which is $195,000. On paper, it seems like the admin position has been eliminated, and yet we have a contract for it. So we're asking for that to be reconsidered. Thanks.
Great, thank you. I don't have any more speaker cards. But Scott, do we have a written comment?
Yes, we do have one written comment from Saritha Parsoya of Calero Street in Milpitas, the children at Kertner Elementary School. Dear sir, earlier, students were allowed to take independent studies with long-term break. By this way, they were able to visit their home country and spend some time. With the removal of this option, it's becoming hard for students and their families to visit their home country during school session. Kids can't visit home country during summer break because of high temperature and chances of getting severely sick. Short-term independent studies give student 14 consecutive days, while the longest long break is two weeks during Christmas break. Any immigrant student and their family need at least three weeks to visit their family, get visa stamping, and back into the country. Unfortunately, this is not possible for both short-term independent studies or long-term break. It's my humble request to you to bring back the option for students to take short-term independent with long-term break. Regards, Saritha.
Great, thank you, Scott.
Superintendent Jordan, based on that comment, could we make sure that there's a reminder of what education code is and with the student attendance, as far as the number of days that they're allowed to miss from school of the 180 days and the truancy policy that's been stated by the Senate Clara County Officer Education? It seems like we're going to have to do that education every year so that parents have an understanding of. It's not us saying that you can't. It is what the education code is and what law is in terms of the number of days that you're supposed to be in school. And if you're absent days beyond that, you're considered truant. So we have to make sure that that word gets out on a continuous basis so that they understand that we're not saying no to their vacation or what they want to do, but the fact that it is the law that there are a number of days that they're supposed to be in school. Anything beyond that, they are considered truant by the county, which has other repercussion.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Norwood. All right, item 11, MUSD strategic goals. I'll start the first one. Is there a hand raised for public comment? I- so when you finish your public comment, please fill out a green card and turn it in. But go ahead and give your public comment now.
So I understand the policy, but how does Fremont and other schools work? They are allowing multiple days to go at least three weeks at a home country, and two weeks is not possible for us at all. So we just want to combine holidays like Christmas break while we take independent study. If it is matter of absence of 180-day prisons, then yeah. How do other unified districts allow?
So as far as public comment, we don't respond to public comment, just for your awareness. You get the two minutes to make your comment. We typically discuss items that are not agendized. What we typically do during public comment is if we find that we would like to agendize this particular topic in the future, we will request that of the superintendent. Thank you so much. But please don't forget to fill out that green card and provide to Scott, and we can follow up with you as well, too.
Yeah. So a request to Superintendent. Clearly, we need education for our parents to understand the different policies and constraints that we have to live by. And I would encourage us to set up some sort of outreach to our parents to do that.
I'll check in with our principals because I believe they already do that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on, item 11, MUSD strategic goals. I'll read the first one, and then we'll go down to my right to the board members. Build a culture we that engages parents, staff, and community partners in supporting student success.
Improve communication systems for better outreach to parents, students, and staff.
Develop educational pathways that allow students to apply their passion in learning for their future careers.
Focus services and support systems to ensure that all students are engaged in their learning and are making social, emotional, and academic gains.
And strategic goal number five, identify creative, student-focused strategies to accommodate enrollment growth and ensure healthy learning environments.
Thank you, fellow board members. Item 12, Superintendent's report, recognition.
Thank you. And we have a lot. Welcome back, everybody. Glad to open this 24-25 school year with recognitions, which is, I think, one of the best parts of our meetings. So I'll ask the Board and Cabinet to join me in the front as we begin this process of recognizing people, whether they be students, team members, parents, caregivers, or community members. They have done something that really impacts our school district in a way that helps us to achieve our strategic goals.
For at least the last 25 years, our Milpitas Kuanis has partnered either with Mervens, if you remember that, or currently Kohl's. And in the process of partnering with them, has also taken time throughout the year to raise funds so that up to 150 students every school year in elementary school are able to come and get new school clothes. And this year, the Kuanis, along with Kohl's, had 112 students participate and 90 volunteers. The volunteers, again, are community members, students, some parents, our firefighters, our police, our city leaders, our school board leaders. So many people come out to support the students and to chaperone them as they get to purchase new school clothes. And this year, they contributed $16,000 to these 112 students for school clothes. So I would like to ask our Kuanis Club of Milpitas, who our current president this year is Mr. Joseph Weinstein, to come up with all of the Kuanis leaders, as well as the part- our partner and Kohl's of Milpitas are managers, who cannot make it, Scott is telling me. So we would just like to then have our Kuanians please come on up so we can recognize you for the great work that you do. And I'll also put in a plug for the scholarships that you also contribute to our students every year.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. I'll make this short for those of you who.
I'll make this short, for those of you who don't know what Kuanis is, basically, it's simple. Our motto is helping one student at a time. So anything that you're interested in, in helping students, whether it's feeding the students, whether it's buying them clothes, whether it's working with the sports clubs or whatever, please consider joining Kuanis. We only are dedicated to Milpitas Unified School District. Thank you.
I'm the past president, but one thing I'd like to mention is, we give four fifteen-hundred-dollar scholarships per year, and these scholarships continue for up to four years, and they can be used at any advanced education, whether it's technical training, college, or whatever the student thinks fits them best. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Also in our community, we have the Knights of Columbus with our former Board Trustee, uh, Mr. Guan Ali Santosa, who are always working to raise funds for our students, uh, some might say with the greatest need, who are students particularly in our high school and post-secondary special education programs. And this year, along with, uh, with the Knights of Columbus, we also have, annually, we have the family of the Ocean Supermarket, Mr. Men Quatch and his wife Lana Quatch, and they have, as well, their New Kim Lee Fast Food Restaurant, right next to Ocean Supermarket, and together, they raise funds for our students that go directly to their classroom. If you, when we do our ribbon cutting on our new Life Skills Lab, you can see their donations, um, in the flush, because we've created a Life Skills Lab in part with the funds that they work to raise every year. So I would like to recognize all of you, and thank you for the almost fifty-five thousand, fifty-five hundred dollars that you raised this year.
Uh, that would be to Dorothy.
All right, thank you. Yeah, good evening. So, uh, today, the Knights of Columbus, Senator Elizabeth Council, eighty-seven, forty-seven, presented Colombian Foundation Grant Award and Donation Checks in the amount of fifty-two-hundred dollars and ninety-two dollar and fifty cents, so total is five thousand two hundred, ninety-two dollar and fifty cents, to MUSD for Special Education Program at Milpitas High School. This is the third time, actually, MUSD received a grant award from the Colombian Foundation, supporting people with intellectual disability. Congratulations. Good job. We would like to express our gratitude for the generosity and support of our members and donors, families and friends, Father Andy Siligot and Father Jung Nuyen, and Saint Elizabeth Parish Community, Milpitas High School District Board Member, Superintendent and Staff, teachers, students, volunteers, and parents. Also, thanks to Ocean Supermarket and New Kim Lee Fast Food for consistent and strong support, year after year. We have been very successful, because we all work together. Thank you. And with me also, uh, two officers from, um, Council eighty-seven, forty-seven, Caipan, our Grandite, and Manuel Malabo, trustee. Thank you.
Thank you, and Executive Derping House, you were instrumental, I think, this year in the grant application, and I see also Assistant Principal Mock, who has been, uh, who has in the past also applied and earned the grant. So I thank both of you as well for the work that you put into this. Okay. We also have our young leaders, who provide our elementary students and also middle school students with experiences during the summer. And this year, our Milpitas High School STEM Girls, led by Lauren Lee, Lynn Casinas, and Cassandra Salazar, provided the STEM Girls Milpitas High School Summer Camp in support of our younger generation. So if I could have the three of you come up to accept your reward?
Hi, everyone, I'm Lynn Casinas from Milpitas, um, STEM Girls Club. So I want to introduce our club a little. Uh, when I first moved to the U.S. in my fifth grade, I was the only girl choosing, who chose to accelerate in math in my school, so I'm basically alone by myself. And that actually corresponds to one of our STEM Girl Founder, Vicky Tu's experience. She decided to create the club, as she cannot find another club with sense of belonging in other STEM clubs, and this is the purpose of STEM Girls. We don't want to be the only ones, we want to be one of many, as we want more girls to find interest in STEM, pursue their passion, and succeed. So STEM Girls is always about aiming to decrease gender gap and support minorities, such as girls in the field of STEM. To do so, we just launched our, um, STEM Power for the fourth year, where the club prepares supplies and lessons for over a hundred elementary students in MUSD with different gender, ethnicity, and background, but same interest in STEM. And if you consider yourself an ally, you can support us financially, you can support us by spreading words about the events we host, and provide resources, so that we can share with everyone. Thank you.
We also have another young group of leaders who are science-minded, and that is our Milpitas High School Science Olympiad's Club, and they created the Milpitas Elementary Science Olympics, which they hosted this summer. And the winning team is called Curious Minds, and the members are Renash Jadev, Nia Srivastava, Anme Kapur, Adve Kapur, Prerna Prasad, Tanvi Chinham, Samarth Prabhu, Akancha Prabhu, and Ohas Sakshana. So if we could have you all come up? And do you have a team captain? A head coach? Who's your head coach? Oh, which one? And would you like to say a few words?
Okay, thank you. Uh, hello, everyone. Thank you for recognizing this team. Uh, it's taken some time, but I think all of them are super excited to be finally recognized, and they did a commendable job, and thank you all, the school superintendent and the school board for recognizing them. Thanks.
For the last couple of summers, the city of Milpitas has provided an opportunity for youth called Milpitas Youth Force, and they provide actual earnings, and they seek partners who will then employ these young, young people in an apprenticeship. And Dorothy, and Scott, and Norma, and Priti, and Mary Jude, they all employed these students, and we would like to invite Ali, Sohan, Paco, and Kanakai, and thank you for the service that you provided this summer to all of us. Ms. Dorothy, would you like to say something, since you helped to lead everything?
Uh, I want to thank, uh, Sohan, Paco, Ali, and Kanakai for, um, choosing Milpitas Unified School District as part of their , uh, summer internship. They really, um, help us on a day-to-day, and we wanted to show them what it, what, what it's really like in an office environment. And, you know, sometimes we show them that there are work that needs to get done, even if you don't want it to get done. Uh, so just have a feel of a real-life work situation, so that, you know, and, and we tell them, you know, someone's got to do it, you know? So, uh, so I think, we hope that we gave them the experience and opened their eyes in how an office environment and teamwork actually works in the office, so, and they did such an amazing job. And sometimes we look for additional work, and they're the one asking for more work, and we're like, hold on one second, stop, let's figure something out. And we had a couple of weeks that, uh, we had to shut down the, the district office because of, uh, construction, uh, work, and they were asking, like, we put us somewhere, and, and we're so amazed by their motivation to be here at the office and do some work. So we really enjoyed having them, you know, during the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, Scott, I would like you to introduce our new campaign that you, uh, created. In the past, you might have remembered, our MUSD Champions, and other ways that we have worked to recognize our MUSD team members each month. And this year, Scott is introducing Made in MUSD. And we have two awardees for tonight, Daisy Liu and Lynn Tran, who are, uh, who are from Palmeroy, and we also have Principal Klein and Assistant Principal Bond, so if I could have you two come up, so I can give you their certificates?
Well, while I'm over here, I could just say, this is just a, a, a new, um, employee recognition series that coincides with board meetings and with our social media, um, and we recognize a certificated and a classified employee from a different school site each meeting, which coincides with our principal's report, which is for Palmeroy. And I'm going to give it over to Principal Klein and Assistant Principal Bond to praise their employees.
Perfect, thank you so much, Scott. Uh, so we wanted to kick things off with this new opportunity to share and recognize some of the amazing work that is happening at Palmeroy. So we put it out to our staff and our community to see, who do they see and hear and value as going above and beyond and truly embodying the culture of "we" and a "Made in MUSD" opportunity? And overwhelmingly, we had, uh, two candidates wanted, or, um, that the staff wanted to recognize, and we were both in full agreement. So we wanted to recognize Daisy Liu, she's our Principal Secretary Extraordinaire, and some of the reasons that she was nominated and honored with this opportunity is because she wears a smile always, and happens to wear hats outdoors always. She goes above and beyond in every sense of the meaning. She's a vital member of the Milpitas family, and I know that I would personally be completely lost without her, and, um, if it was one person making the nomination or making the selection, I wouldn't be able to not choose and select Daisy for everything that she's doing for our community, or, and for MUSD. And then our, uh, certificated recognie is Ms. Lynn Tran, and she was nominated because she has been the class that has been full of changing to, uh, this year. It was a combo, it was not a combo, it was a combo, it was, uh, restructured first-grade class, and she just went with it. She was there to be the biggest supporter and biggest cheerleader for all of her students. And she's also been coordinating some of our big shifts in our signature practice, including, uh, some big shifts in our PBIS plan. And one of the members of our community that recognized her is stated, she puts her whole heart into her students and dedicates countless hours to ensure every single one of their successes. So we couldn't be more proud of Daisy and Lynn, and Milpitas truly is a better place because of them.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Scott, for the "Made in MUSD." I look forward to seeing our employees selected for that each month. Thank you. And now, board and cabinet, if you could take a seat?
Uh, Scott, Ms. Principal Bohem is online, if you could pull her over virtually. We'll have to be there for Antonio.
Oh, okay.
We have two new members of our MUSD family, our MUSD team on the administrative side. We have for Melpitas Adult Education, we have our new coordinator. And he will be supporting Ms. Principal Brahim Juliana in the areas of better reaching out to our community members to build partnerships so that our adult learners have access to careers in applying what it is that they're learning in class, as they're learning second languages, as they're learning new skills in medical fields, medical technology, business, administration. And additionally, we have learners that we serve in the corrections. And some of those learners we serve, once they have completed their stay there, they go into what's called the re-entry, and we also serve them. And so Mr. Antonio Fuentes, who comes to us from the County Office of Education, where he has a great deal of experience in the area of early childhood education, which is one of the pathways that Principal Brahim and also our Coordinator of Child Development Center, Dr. Espedia, are working to develop. And I've received a grant from the city to do so. He is very familiar with state funding, which lends itself to adult education. And he began his career working with people who are looking for an alternative pathway. And so he's very familiar with adult learners. And we're excited to have you, Mr. Fuentes, join our team. So if I could have you come up and say a few words?
Thank you. Good evening, Board, Board Trustees, Superintendent Jordan, MUSD Cabinet staff and community. It is a privilege to be here, and it is a privilege for me to introduce myself, Antonio Fuentes. I am very excited to join the Melpitas Unified School District community. Yes, I do have 26 years in the field of education. And it's, I'm coming very enthusiastically in joining this team and Melpitas Unified School District in empowering students to succeed. I want to thank the entire Adult Education Department, led by Ms. Juliana Brahim. Their warm welcome to me in the first couple of days that I have been here have been giving me the eagerness to collaborate with them. And I really look forward to the student-focused strategies and building this culture of "we." That culture of "we" is something that I have experienced throughout my years in education. And if I can just share with you a very small anecdote. When I started my career in '96, '97, there was a student that was completing his, wanted to complete his GD, wanted to go on to become a police officer. And it was working with this student to get his career pathway identified and join the Explorers. And this is '96, '97, when I first started. So it was my first year. I think at that time, Jesus Contreras, he was a young man, and he wanted to define how to go and become a police officer. Fast forward, fast forward two years after developing that plan with him, 2008, 2009, as an administrator, I find myself driving to the post office to deliver some cards for the holidays. And as I'm parking, I see a police car pass me by and make a U-turn. It's a K-9 unit. And as I'm looking through my mirror, I see the car parked behind me. And then the lights come on. And I roll down my windows, put my hands on my steering wheel, and look at the officer approach me. And as the officer approached me, he kneeled down, and he said, "Mr. Fuentes, how are you?" And I looked at him and I said, I recognized him, I said, "Jesus." And he stepped back and he said, "Look, I made it." And it was a proud moment for me. It is a proud moment because at that time, I'm living in a moment in a parallel universe where I have a police officer with a badge, the gun and the stick in front of me that I was assuming I had done some kind of violation in my driving. But he was very proud. And at that time, I was very happy to see what I was looking at. But he says to me, "Come over, I want to show you my dog." And the last thing that you're trying to figure out is, this is a police officer, what did I do wrong? But at the moment, you're here with the student. It's that culture of "we." We go through our careers, I think, day in, day out, contributing to the work that we do. But we work as a community to improve the lives of a lot of students that we sometimes don't see it until years later. And we run into them, and when we find them, or they find us, not only do they surprise us of the work that we've done, but that culture of "we" really starts in the day-in, day-out work that we do as educators. So I am very happy to join. Together, I look forward to engaging parents, students, staff, community partners in support of student success. In my brief interactions with staff and students in the Adult Ed program, I have seen the value of inclusivity of the MUSD values and goals. I feel that I've been welcomed, and I see those playing out in the students that we're educating. My goal is to foster a culture of, a culture of "we." And I've seen the value of it, I've seen the magic of it. And I really am happy to be here, and I look forward to working with you in this upcoming years. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Principal Brahim, for joining us. I know that you are with family right now, and your time is very valuable. And I appreciate you being here to support Mr. Fuentes. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I say a couple of words? On behalf of all Adult Ed staff and students, I want to give a warm welcome to Antonio as he joins the Adult Ed team. He has been very active in, you know, in meeting some of the onboarding requirements that we've had. He's been very gracious with his time and has come to the facility and to the school to talk to our students and also to get to know me. And I just look forward to getting to know you more and working closely with you, Antonio, on behalf of our students and with the great support of Melpitas Unified School District's Board, Superintendent Shoroff's Cabinet, and the community at large. So welcome, and I look forward to working with you very soon. And thank you, Superintendent Jordan, for having me on tonight.
Thank you. Next, I would like to invite Mr. Robert Richardson II, who is coming to us from the Sacramento area, where he has served in the high-tech high system for quite a number of years. And one of the key pieces that he brings to us is, actually, there are several. One, as Assistant Superintendent, James likes to point out, the startup mindset. Secondly, he understands how to build partnerships. You're noticing a very key, important piece in building our pathways for learners is partnerships. And so we're seeking candidates who have that experience and who have the notion of how to build partnerships. And Mr. Richardson also has spent a great deal of time and also was one of the first in the project-based learning efforts about 13 years ago. And these are all aspects of the Melpitas High School Extension Program at the Innovation Campus. And so we welcome you, Mr. Richardson. And I would like to give you the opportunity to say a few words.
Good evening, Board. As you were told, I am Robert Richardson. I'm pleased to have been chosen as your Assistant Principal for Melpitas High School Extension at Innovation Campus, which is a mouthful. So with your permission, I will simply refer to Innovation Campus in my future remarks. This is my 17th year as administrator in education. I have had the privilege to work for multiple districts at various high schools for both large and small during my career, which began way back when as a special education teacher. And gratefully, my broad experiences have brought me to your door. I began from the ground up at a project-based learning school that we built back in Sacramento back in 2004. Not high-tech high, but New Tech High School. Back in 2004. At that time, New Tech Network of Schools numbered nine, of which Sacramento was the sixth in the replication effort that began out of NAPA. Back then, it was known as the Buck Institute for Education. Now it's known as Knowledge Works. That is, that original six schools has now 250 schools across the country representing project-based learning as their primary mode of delivering education. Of the five strategic goals, numbers, goal numbers, and you've already read them, so I won't read them to you. Goal numbers four and five are where I see the initial focus of the work for us at Innovation Campus. Not, of course, to the neglect of the other three. I came to this district to take on the challenge of building the dream that is innovation from Sacramento because I'm a firm believer that project-based learning is the most effective, engaging method to achieve both a high level of student learning and student engagement. As a 14-year practitioner in project-based learning at a school called Sacramento New Technology High School, I have come to understand that authentic PBL leverages student collaboration, student creativity, and the opportunity for authentic problem-solving in order to achieve real student learning in all phases of their social and emotional development, as well as academic content. Research shows that educational experiences that are active, social, contextual, engaging, and student-owned lead to deeper learning. This statement precisely describes authentic project-based learning. Authentic project-based learning, as opposed to students doing projects, is the journey we endeavor to embark on at Innovation. As you well know, research also indicates that benefits of collaborative learning, among other things, include development of higher-level thinking, oral communication, self-management, and leadership skills; promotion of student-adult interaction, which in these days is hard to foster, as you know, students kind of avoiding adults; increase in student retention, self-esteem, and responsibility; exposure to and increase in understanding of diverse perspectives; and preparation for real-life social and employment situations. These are the goals. I have witnessed students achieve these outcomes firsthand. Whether it was students who had special needs, whether they came from a background where they had not experienced academic success in the past, whether they excel in all phases of learning but need further challenges or anywhere and elsewhere in between. Students that are engaged in authentic project-based learning, whether, while they may have different levels of academic proficiency, they share these common attributes as a result of project-based learning being the primary focus of curriculum delivery. The common adage is that two or three heads are better than one. Students through peer instruction and collaboration teach each other by addressing misunderstandings, clarifying misconceptions, sharing perspectives, and ideas. For these reasons and more, the initial focus of the Innovation Campus to make progress towards strategic goals four and five will be to build authentic PBL practices in our students and staff to build teacher capacity for developing creative, relevant, engaging, and authentic learning opportunities where students acquire real-world skills that set them on a course to attain whatever goals they have set for themselves. And finally, to establish community and industry partnerships to open up opportunities for our students, further sharpen our program, and to keep it relevant. I am humbled to be a part of the reimagining of education that you are undertaking at Innovation Campus, and I am grateful to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, I would like to invite Mr. Jonathan Payne up. Mr. Jonathan Payne is going to be serving in the interim while Principal Stice is out. So Mr. Payne will be the interim administrator in charge at Calaveras Hills High School. And he will be in that position at least through January, potentially longer. And we're, I'm very excited about you being in this position and taking the opportunity to really explore and become even more of the leader that you already are. And so I'd like to ask you, Mr. Payne, to come to the podium.
Thank you, Superintendent, Board of Trustees, and Executive Cabinet Members, also student, school board reps. I'm thankful to be here as a representative of Calaveras Hills. I had something I wrote down, but before I really touched on that, I just want to kind of just talk about my journey real briefly and why it makes this something that's important, something that's exciting for me. Growing up in Oakland Unified School District, you had, you know, your comprehensive schools, and you had your alternative ed schools. A lot of times, you really did not know about alternative ed or continuation because they were kind of away from everything, and they really weren't highlighted as something of importance. So when you look at Melpitas Unified, when you're talking about alternative ed setting, not only is Calaveras Hills seen as something of importance based on, we're in a new building this year, we're on an innovative campus. It's great, it's amazing. The students so far have really taken a liking to it. And so we're definitely blessed to be able to have this type of opportunity for students to be able to go to a school that they can see that the community values them, they can see that the school board values them, and they can see that the district values them. And so one thing I wanted to highlight in regards to some of the students that we have, when they come in to our school, we have students that come out and they have just something in general in them when they come out to the district of our school. And they look at it from the standpoint of they're discouraged sometimes, sometimes they're not motivated, sometimes they feel like wherever they have went through before they arrive at our school, sometime in a way, they feel kind of broken. And so for us, for me, it's real big because when I grew up, I grew up in a district that really didn't value us, and I grew up in a district where I was that student. And so for me to be in this opportunity to work with students is very important and impactful for me because I feel like it's a chance for them to see, when they look at me, somebody that struggled, somebody that people counted out, somebody that people doubted. And I was able to be in this role as a counselor, and now I'm able to be in this role as an admin. So when they look at somebody, when they're seeing me across from them and I'm talking to them in intakes, or when they're seeing me talk to them at assemblies, they can say, "Hey, Mr. Payne was a student that struggled, but he never gave up. He was a student that really looked at, he just needed somebody to believe in him. He just needed somebody to give him hope, and this is where he was able to be, and this was his journey." So this is very important for me to be able to be in a role like this because I feel like I can be living proof to students that anything is possible if you never give up and you believe. I want to get into a strategic goal, number four, of what we really want to work on this year while I'm in my interim role. And that strategic goal focusing on services and support systems to ensure that all students are engaged in their learning and are making social, emotional, and academic gains. So one of our main real items that we really want to touch on this year is project-based learning. Students will be able to take ownership of their learning by letting them dive into real projects that require collaboration, problem-solving, and critical thinking. This is a hands-on approach, not only enhances academic achievement, but it also helps them grow socially, emotionally, as they work together, navigate challenges, and reflect on their progress. By integrating PBL, project-based learning, into the curriculum, we can create a more engaging and supportive learning environment that addresses the holistic needs of each student. Also, one other thing that we really want to touch on this year will be our restorative practices. And so we're looking to roll out restorative practices to create a stronger, more connected school community. And the plans include training our staff on how to use these practices effectively and setting up clear steps for bringing them into our everyday routine. We're focused on building real conversations between students and staff and using circles and mediation to address issues and support each other. The goal is to build a culture where everyone feels heard, respected, and supported. So these are our two main items that we're really working on this year that we have not worked on before, and we want to roll that out for this school year. I do thank you for your time, and I thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you. Next, I have the State of the District report. Would you like me to just go ahead to that?
Yes, Superintendent.
Super excited about our leaders this year. Well, welcome back, Trojans, and MUSD team, students, families, and supporters. One of our two big audacious goals this year is to continue to strive towards increasing our average daily attendance to 97%. Our other big audacious goal is to increase outcomes, positive, successful outcomes for our learners of African and Latinx ancestry. Tonight, I'm focusing on Tonight, I'm focusing on increasing the average daily attendance to 97%. Prior to COVID, it averaged around 97%. And for every one percentage of average daily attendance, the district has about $1.3, $1.4 million that comes into supporting our learners. In addition to that, and even more importantly, when all of our learners are at school, they have a much better chance of succeeding. And there is data that shows that students who are here every day, just by the mere fact of being at school every day, have a better success rate than those who miss 10 or more school days. Last year, we increased our average daily attendance by a half percent, which is really good. And it is difficult to increase, but we are making it. And as of today, the average daily attendance rate for MUSD is 97.8%, almost 98%. And on the first day of school, it was just shy of 99%. So we know we can do this, and it's about engaging our learners. And you see in these pictures that our learners are engaged from elementary, middle, through adult school. Because we have a dynamic MUSD team of people who care, we heard from three people who are joining our leadership team, and we heard from them the passion about why education matters, because it provides opportunity for pathways and for what's possible. And I know that all of our team members carry that with them. I want to switch to another goal of ours this year, which is to tackle our deficit structure that we have, and a great deal of that structure is attributed to one-time funds. Up here, what you have are the one-time funds that we received as a result of COVID for mitigating the impact of COVID for safety and health concerns, as well as mitigating the impact of missing in-person school and the effect on our learners and their academic success. Above, I have how much of those COVID funds were spent on paraprofessionals who provided learner support, was spent on our nurse and health clerks, and also spent on mental health counselors. So it's about $2.6 million. Last school year, we spent the school year talking and also, actually since about January of 2023, we spent a lot of time in different configurations of stakeholders, from parent groups through surveys and also as a leadership and associations roundtable. And we talked about areas where we might find savings so that we could reduce that structural deficit. And one of the issues that we talked about is these one-time funds and how they support, for example, the equivalent of a six-hour health clerk at every school site, which prior to COVID, it was only three hours. And our school teams in the front office, particularly our secretaries and also our admin, but especially our secretaries, found that when the health clerk was there for the full school day, it greatly assisted them in their ability to do what they needed to do to serve the parents who came to the offices, to serve their teammates, and to serve our learners. So rather than reducing and cutting back to where we were before COVID, our board recommended that we, or actually took action, that we placed Measure Q, it is now known as Measure Q, on the ballot for November 5th. And so I would like for us to have a special board meeting at about 4:30 so that MUSD team members can attend, so we can go deeper into a State of the District and really look at where our budget is and where we are and the impact that we can realize if Measure Q becomes a reality. Have to be careful to make sure I'm not advocating, because we can educate when we're in our roles, but we can't advocate. So speaking of educating, if you look on our website, we do have this parcel tax page, and it provides all of the facts about what the Measure Q funds would be spent on, why we need Measure Q funds, and also the fiscal impact of Measure Q. So I invite the community and also our team members to take a look at that and look forward to sharing in more detail the State of the District and how the funds from Measure Q would be spent to continue to support our learners. And I look forward to setting a special date with the board on a Tuesday, potentially September 17th. And that's my report for tonight.
Thank you Superintendent Jordan. Moving to item 13, Superintendent's Executive Cabinet Reports. Members of the Executive Cabinet will have significant information to present to the governing board on topics that are not on the agenda. Reports are limited to 90 seconds each with five minutes allocated to the principal's report. Superintendent Jordan, would you like to go?
I would like to start with our Chief Business Officer, Dorothy Riconese.
Thank you Superintendent Jordan and Board President Minho. The Student Nutrition Services Team had the professional development opportunity to attend culinary training at the Culinary Institute of America in July. It was a very fun, exciting training for the entire Student Nutrition Team. We also watched the Live School Services of California webinar on the 24-25 enacted budget, which I will give you a brief update later, later tonight. The accounting staff was busy closing our books, making final invoice payments, setting payables and receivables so we can finally close the year. And our payroll team was also busy preparing the year-end and rear payrolls, setting up new hires in the payroll system, and getting them onboard with their preferred health benefits and dependents. Our team is also finalizing our unaudited actuals and working with our auditors to complete the audit, which will be presented to the board sometime in December or January. That's my report for tonight.
Thank you. And let's just move on down to Executive Director Mary G. Dorpinghaus.
Good evening. Scott, will you pull up our slide, please? Well, Scott is, yep, that's it right there. Scott's pulling up the slide. On August 8th and 9th, we welcomed back about 60 new staff members to MUSD. It included general education teachers, it included special educators, specialists, teachers on special assignment, great group of energetic, excited, happy to be in Milpitas and being a part of our culture of we. Our departments, HR, business services, tech, and of course, LND, were actively engaged in helping them to learn processes, procedures, covering district initiatives, including the attendance that was mentioned earlier, as well as looking at our special populations and how do we support our neurodiverse students, our students who are in foster, youth students, and those that are unhoused. We also reviewed trainings, the various platforms, and also launched for some of them new opportunities with CONMEGO. And the thing that you'll see on this screen is a lot of fun. This is photos from the new staff orientation, as well as the first day of school, where our team members were building relationships with their new colleagues or some of their veteran colleagues, and really starting to make those connections. Our sites also continued those connections, saying, you know, relations and social, emotional learning before diving into the content. And then I'm going to turn it over to Preeti, continue with the slide two.
Thanks. So as Executive Director Dorpinghaus said, the relationship's first approach is embedded throughout the MUSD culture. Here you can see one aspect of that practice, one aspect of that practice in what it looks like, threshold greetings. And this is not just a first-day practice. Students are regularly greeted by adults as they enter the campus, as they enter class, and throughout the day during transition times. This helps to establish a connection and for students to feel seen. Thank you.
I'm just going to add on one thing. If you'll click on the little video on there, Scott, this is the roaring wave from Rose, and you'll see on there was Rose staff doing this work this past week. Oh! There we go, I'm pointing, I'm pointing, look at me! Here we go! There we go! There we go! We're going to get it! There we go! Hey, hey! Hey, Scott! We're going, we're going! And that includes our LND report.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent of Human Relations, Mr. Damon James.
It's a hard act to follow. You know, I debated what to share with you this evening, Board, because I'm just so happy that we were able to fulfill our promise in hiring individuals to start this school year and to express to the community, you don't know how challenging it is to bring the people that need to be in Milpitas to Milpitas. Sometimes people apply for positions, but they're not qualified, they want to teach, but they don't have credentials, and all of these factors play into how we bring people into Milpitas. The most exciting thing that I get to do in this role is to make those offers to individuals and say, we'd like to bring you to Milpitas, and to let them know what I believe is so special about Milpitas. Mary G. alluded to 60, there were 60, about 60 people that attended the certificated new hire training, but I actually made offers to over 80 people. And we're happy, we're very happy with the people that decided to join. We still have some work to do on the classified front, and our big push in October, October 5th of all days, is the Classified Recruitment Fair at the Santa Clara County Office of Education. So our team will be there actively recruiting. Any of you that were in the Great Mall during the summer, you saw the signage, we are still looking, always looking for new people to join Milpitas. And then, since you mentioned Rose, and there was a conversation about training with the SNS staff, I do want to call out that the first three days of coming back are the staff, the entire staff is engaged in some level of professional development, and I had the opportunity to see Rose's school, and the teachers were actually preparing their students for how to behave and cooperate with one another on the playground at recess time. And it was a really interesting thing because the teachers actually embodied the behaviors of the students, as well as the supervisory support that was present. And I got to watch them, you know, run around, maybe listening, climbing things they weren't supposed to be climbing on, eating where they weren't supposed to be eating, and then how the team came about deciding on what rules were appropriate for which levels. And I thought, like, we always talk about what the culture of we is and kind of considering our audience, but they did a really good job of not just kind of top-down saying, this is what it needs to be, but thinking about what the experience is for kids and how do we maybe modify some of the things that we did in the past to make it more palpable for the students. So that's my HR report.
Thank you.
So just a quick shout-out to the HR department. It's awesome to hear that we have all of our teaching positions filled because it gives us a great start for the beginning of the year. Less, we have stability, we, hopefully, our parents know who their teachers are, and we move forward. So I want to congratulate the HR department for the great job done.
Thank you Superintendent. Do we start the principal's report?
Oh, yes, thank you. We have our Pomeroy principal's report, Principal Nicole Klein, and Assistant Principal Vanessa Bond.
Be very gentle with it, I've turned it off about five times already today. Thank you for having us this evening. My name's Nicole Klein, the principal at Pomeroy, and with me tonight is Vanessa Bond, my right-hand lady. We say, well, we, I say that she is the tallest lady in all the land on our announcements every morning, and she had some big shoes to fill, and she is doing an impeccable job. And you'll see tonight, we have a little video clip, not yet, that really shows the creativity and the impeccable attention to detail that Ms. Bond brings to every single thing that she does. So to touch on a few things that we have going on at Pomeroy this year, because the first board meeting is a little challenging, it's more about what are the things that are in the works for this year. I do have some data points, don't worry, Chris. So our big pushes this year, besides attendance, but we're really great at that already, are MUSD strategic goal number one about building a culture of we and establishing a strong connection to community and a sense of belonging. That's one of our huge pushes this year, and it started before the year started with building some stronger relationships with our teacher teams and having opportunities to spend time, quality time, with them as people, and seeing them, hearing them, and really allowing that sense of community and belonging and family to be felt even at a stronger level this year at Pomeroy. And also, one of our big goals with the Pomeroy community this year, and it's still early on, and we're still voicing it out, so a lot of people are going to be hearing it for the first time tonight, our push for curiosity. We're still shifting, even though it's been years, shifting from COVID and getting back to what pre-COVID school life looked like. And so our goal this year is to provoke curiosity within everyone in our community. We want them to want to know what we're doing at school and how they can engage in a curious, loving way with our day-to-day work. And so our goal is to have every family attend a minimum of three events or in-person touchpoints this school year. So making sure that we're creating that spark and that joy to get everybody in. And even though we've got those nice, strong black fences, we want to open those up to really invite our family and our community in. So remember, three times, come to our events this year so that you can help us meet that goal.
Principal Klein, is that those three times different from back-to-school night, parent conference?
Yes. Well, we do know and acknowledge that it is difficult based on the family needs and dynamics of work schedules and things of that. Sometimes those night events are very difficult for our families to attend, and so we want to create like a wide range and scope of opportunities for our families to attend. And so if, if joining virtually is that first step to get a family involved, we want to count that. We want to see it as an opportunity that's meeting them where they're at and say, yes, we got you, got you hooked, now let's take one more step deeper, get you on campus once. And then also, our push for attendance, we're going to continue to push it. Our goal isn't 97% because we beat that. That's right, that's right, I mean, just, super competitive, if you don't already know. But our goal, we reached 97.1% last year, and so our school goal is 97.4% because once you hit the 97, it's really hard to get past that. So we're ecstatic with our 97.1%, but we want 97.4%. We're already at 98.32%, so there's your data point. And then also, before we jump into the short minute-and-a-half video, we're working on enhancing our signature practice around PBIS. At Pomeroy, we call it BEST, Building Effective Schools Together. And to kick that off, we updated our school mission and vision, and we're transforming the, currently transforming them into student-friendly language so that we can make it fun. And we have a very creative staff, and we have a teacher that loves to rap and dance, and so we're trying to hone those skills. and so, we're trying to hone those skills into something we can all do because I'm not good at that. So, we're working collaboratively to really make school fun and push that excitement out in order to bring the whole Milpitas community in. So, without further ado, thank you. Thank you all so much.
Ms. Klein, quick question. We had a public comment earlier from a parent talking about the long-term independent study and that, how are you handling that communication at your school site with the parents?
I'm putting it off, no. It is, it is a very difficult conversation to have. The idea of independent study in my conversations with family is that an independent study is something that you take for a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We have for trips and vacations that are things we do annually, things that we do to reset, recharge. I encourage our families to schedule those during those extended times off. We have times that are extended for summer in order for us to have those opportunities to really be with family and connect in true, meaningful ways. If we're taking an independent study for 14 school days attached to a two-week holiday recess, we're not just saying, "Go on your vacation," we're sending 14 school days' worth of work. And so, the opportunity for a child to engage with their family is minimal on those 14 days because they're still being held for the accountability of all of the academics they're missing. But they're not receiving that instruction from a trained teacher. And so, the quality of work and the rigor of the work is scaled down because it has to be something that a student, that a child can do independently. And then, we play wild games of catch-up when the students return. Personally, I struggle with the concept because I see it from an educator's lens, but then I also see it from the family's lens of like, "But this is our time." Like, everyone, we all live in a very expensive area in the country, and I think we all search for those bargain flights when we're traveling. And it is much higher to fly in the summer, and it is much higher to fly over those two weeks over our holiday break in December and January. So, when you're able to leave one, two, almost three weeks earlier, when other schools or districts aren't permitting that, it's very cost-effective. So, I see that stance also. But we have the students for 180 days. There are 365 days in the calendar year. We can only do so much with the 180 days that we have the students. We need every single one of those days.
Great, thank you so much. Do you have a question? Trustee Norwood?
I was just acknowledging what she said. We only have 180 days. We need every day to serve the students, to prepare them for life.
Thank you, Trustee Norwood. Item 14, Student Board Rep Introductions and Reports. Welcome, our student board reps. We have a new set of student board reps this year. Student board reps will typically report on their school and student activities, and reports are limited to 90 seconds each. However, with this being your first time here, please just introduce yourself, the school that you represent, and what made you want to be a school board rep member. So, Scott, go ahead.
Okay, we'll start with our Milpitas High School Student Board Rep Mei Chung. Go right ahead.
You can pull the mic closer.
My name is Mei Chung. I'm a junior this year at Milpitas High School. I'm currently involved in ASB, and I do tutoring with like some other people I know from, from like after-schools or my parents' colleagues or whoever in the community. And this year, I'm trying to get more involved in clubs like Speech and Debate, Chinese Club, and DND. It's like really diverse and random, but I'm trying to get into everything. Because I went to Burnett and Rancho, and while those school experiences were really great, I felt like I wasn't really involved in the school community because both of my parents are immigrants, they don't have any ties to anyone at the schools, so they weren't aware that these events were going on. And I was just a kid, so I didn't really know either. And I hope that through my role here, I can also try to involve other people just like me who might not know those events are going on. I was a class officer both my freshman and sophomore year, but I wanted to become the student board rep because I felt limited in the impact I was able to make as an officer. And I hope to use this position to like connect people in our community and gain experience as a leader. During the first week of our school, we had Welcome Splash, which included Spirit Week and something called First Friday, where we have a bunch of vendors and student businesses at The Green to try to have all these events in one place, and everyone at the school comes to visit. And then, the next big events at our school are going to be Homecoming, which is the week of October 5th, and Powerpuff, which is girls' football and guys' cheerleading. Thank you.
All right, moving down the line, we have our student board rep from MUSD Middle College High School, Elijah Sandoval. Go right ahead.
Hello, my name is Elijah Sandoval. I'm the school board rep from Milpitas Middle College. I have been a part of the district for 12 years, and I'm currently enrolled in my second year at MMCHS. Over the years, I've had the opportunity to explore different pathways, including Calhills, MHS, and independent studies. This year, our school has had the opportunity to expand to the 10th grade. We held a school entrepreneurship workshop to learn about different techniques into starting a business, which included brand-making, website-building, and marketing techniques. I'm currently in the process of making an art club that encourages our new students to get out of their comfort zone, ask each other for help, and incorporate their art into their schoolwork. Last Friday, we held our annual school picnic at Augustine Park. This helped many new students come out of their comfort zone with games organized by students in their grade. This participation really helped bring new energy to the campus as college courses were rolling around the corner. Some of our up-and-coming events are, is our Back to School Night, which welcomes all to join on September 5th at 5:00 p.m. Thank you.
All right, and then for our student board representative from Calaveras Hills High School, Maricela Gavidia. Right ahead.
Hi, I'm Maricela Gavidia, representing Calaveras Hills. I'm really excited to be a board member because I feel like continuation schools, like Mr. Payne said, continuation schools and adult ed schools don't get as much representation as they should, so I'm glad to be here. And some updates on our school is we're having a Back to School Night on Wednesday, September 18th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and we will be having childcare services and translators because we know that is a really big issue with some people, they don't have somewhere to put their little kids when they're trying to go like support their bigger kids. And we will also be having guided tours of the campus where the community will be able to check out the new campus and meet the staff. This year, we'll also be continuing project-based learning, and we'll have a consulting company called PBL Works to come and observe us and help us continue to implement this new strategy of learning. And this is also our first time having ninth graders at Calaveras Hills, and our Avid class, which is for freshmen and I believe other grades, is also a really good success with 100% attendance so far. Thank you.
Nice job, student board reps, and welcome. Looking forward to your engagement this year. Special shout-out to Senior Trustee Norwood for being their mentor this year as well. Moving on to item 15, Board Group Agreements. In essence of time, I just ask all board members, "Welcome back and please recommit to the board group agreements as we continue to work this year and focus on students." At a later time, we can revisit and read each of these board group agreements. Moving to item 16, Board Communication Requests. This part of the agenda provides school board members the opportunity to report on their activities as elected representatives. School board members may request the placement of items in future board agenda, relay information from the community, or request information from the staff. We'll start with Senior Trustee Norwood.
Thank you, Board President. Now, I'll zip through these things. It's been a very, very busy summer on behalf of Milpitas Unified School District. Continue to do the work with the CSBA AI Task Force, the CSBA Delegate Assembly, and working with the CSBA, which stands for the California School Boards Association, developing training and school board member trainings for students and as well as other school board members. I'm also the chair of the Santa Clara County School Boards Association Legislative Action Committee and the treasurer for the Santa Clara County School Boards Association as a whole. In my support, with the support of my colleagues of MUSD, we continue to work on issues such as employee housing, expanding early childcare for our new little ones, and then more funding sources through legislative and strategic partners. In July, I had the opportunity to spoke at the California Latino School Boards Association Conference about school district ecosystems and how to support the learning. And on behalf of the Milpitas Unified School District, I received a donation of $100 from DJ O'Henry to support MHS high school student seniors. And then, we also received a support of backpacks. So, any of our principal, of our elementary school principals and middle school principals, if they see any students that are in need of backpacks, we were able to secure a small donation of backpacks that we'll be delivering to each of the schools for our students that did not have them. I do have a couple of asks, and my ask is that to be posted on all district AI, for the district guidelines for all the departments, including special education, and English-language learner reclassification, continued reports on chronic absenteeism, which schools are we having the most chronic absenteeism and what we are doing to resolve that issue so that we can strive for that 97%. And then, this is also opioid awareness week, so I would like an update on our fentanyl rollout as far as our middle schools and high schools and the training. And then, finally, in building of the culture, we want to make sure that we have consistent staffing. So, the other question I would have is that what schools in our district have the greatest employee turnover and in what positions so that we can make sure that we shore that up for the future that we can serve all of our students? Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Norwood. Trustee Chung.
Thank you. I'll keep mine short. This year, I'm still continuing my efforts with, across our Santa Clara County school boards, partnering to look at our challenge with our McKinley Vental kids. So, we're looking at strategies as a, as a group here in Santa Clara County as to, as school board members, what we can effectively do as a group. And then, I'll just leave it at, I think this year's back to school was awesome. I appreciate going to different schools, delivering donuts with my fellow trustees, and seeing that our schools are ready to go. So, that's all for my report.
Thank you, Trustee Chung. Lord Kirk Nakka.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome back, MUSD, and welcome to our new school representatives, Elijah Mai and Maricela. And yes, our first day of school started off with the Indian Independence Day, and we are still continuing to celebrate every weekend. And yes, I, being the part of the Milpitas Chamber of Commerce and the Rotary Club, I would love to see more partnerships and try to tap into the potential resources and the pockets that we have around in the community and more community engagement. And outreach would make a lot of difference in our growth and in our students' progress overall. So, summer has been super-packed with my girls accelerating their courses. Yeah, so, yeah, it's a wonderful start of the year and the Back to School Nights and the first day, first week of the school with amazing attendance that we have overall from different school sites. So, I am excited and welcome everybody again into the wonderful and other yet successful school year ahead. Thank you so much. That concludes my report. President No.
Thank you, Board Clerk Nakka. Board Vice President Yichuan.
Thank you very much, President No, and welcome back another school year. It's busy since the beginning or before school started. We participated in the Relationship and Belonging Panel for the new orientation, the new higher orientation. I volunteer for Bingo to support the Rotary Club. We did the Welcome Back at MUSD. I attended the Economic Development Trace Commission meeting through the chamber, attended the Randall's Fiesta, several Welcome Backs at the elementary school, first day of school, visited most of the school sites, participated in the Indian Day Parade and Freedom Gala. And last but not least, I want to welcome our new student board reps. One of them, I was her substitute teacher at Burnett. The other one, one of them, I found out he's one of my neighbors from over the weekend, so I want to welcome each and every one of you guys. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Vice President Yichuan. In essence of time, I'll forego my updates here and move on to item 17, Reports. Learning Development, the 2024 Summer Program Report.
Thank you.
Executive Director Preeti Jari and Executive Director Mary J. Dorpenhaus.
Thank you. At this time, we would like to invite up our learning and development leaders as well as our summer school site administrators, as well as we have a student presenter, a couple student presenters from the elementary level. So, parents, you're also welcome to join. We have been very busy this year, not just opening school, but over the summer, creating extended learning opportunities for our students, and you'll hear directly from our elementary and secondary students as well as the administrators about those learnings.
All right, good evening, board members, Superintendent Jordan and executive cabinet members. We're going to jump right in because we do have some elementary students, and it's probably past their bedtime, so I'm going to let Mr. Patino introduce them, and then we also have some high school student speakers as well.
Okay, good evening, members of the board, President Min, Vice President Chuang, Superintendent Jordan, Dr. Nakka, Mr. Robert Young, Mr. Norwood, and other members of the board and members of the cabinet. We have two students who attended our summer school program, and I would like to call Tiana Salamanca. So, Tiana, would you please come here? Por favor, puedes venir un momento? She is going to share her experience. She is going, she represents the TWB program, the Two-Way Bilingual Immersion Program, and I will pass on, will you please, Raquel? This is the, this is the translation, she is going to say it in Spanish, but you'll have the translated version here in English. So...
You can, you can remove the microphone. There you go.
There you go. Hola, buenos dias a los miembros de la junta directiva del distrito escolar. Mi nombre es Tiana Camila y es un gusto conocerlos a todos ustedes asistir a la escuela de verano para segundo grado y aprendí muchas cosas gracias a la maestra Miss Matías. Pude mejorar mi lectura en español y rescatar niveles de lectura. Además aprendí algo que ciencias como tres estados de la materia que son sólido, líquido y gaseoso. Quiero recomendarles a todos los estudiantes que aprovechen y asistan a la escuela de verano si son invitados porque pueden aprender muchas cosas nuevas y mejorar el aprendizaje. Por último quiero agradecerles por su atención y por escucharme. Buenas noches y gracias.
I'll do a quick translation in English. So she wants to recommend all students who are invited to summer school programs to go to the summer school programs because they can learn new things and also reinforce academic skills that they didn't finish during the regular school year. Also, they feel more confident in attending summer school. Even though it's only for 20 days, they got a lot of confidence, and then they can do things that they didn't have the opportunity during the 180 days to finish. Thank you. Now, we have Emily Cepeda. Emily Cepeda attended summer school for second grade, and she is currently in third grade. She, fourth grade. And now she is going to share her experience with summer school.
Hello. Good evening to each and every member of the Milpitas Unified School District Board of Directors. My name is Emily Sabella, and I attended third grade summer school. I am going to tell you about my experience during the 20 days of school. My teacher was Ms. Campbell, and in this class, I was able to learn many interesting things. I liked how science was integrated in summer school because I was able to learn some experience. First, I learned about how things glow in the dark. I also learned about new words like bioluminescence, chemiluminescence, and photoluminescence. In addition, I was able to learn how animals use their glow and catch their prey. I want to tell you that I liked attending summer school program because it gave me the more, because it gave me more confidence to reinforce academic skills I did not finish during the regular school year. Thank you very much for your attention and have a good night.
Now, we have two students who are current ninth graders at Calaveras Hills. They attended our summer bridge program. I have James Farley and also Kainoa Le Samoranos, who will share their experience. James Farley.
At summer school, we learned how to make tortillas from scratch, and I like how we got to socialize and cook with our friends. It was fun, and I liked how it represented Mexican culture when we made tortillas. I enjoyed it because I never made Mexican food from scratch. We also made some pizza, and we got to add on our own toppings because the teachers provided us with the stuff we needed. Also, tortillas, we turned into tacos was good. And the teachers that taught us how to make it was Ms. Zee and Dr. Schmidt. They gave us the stuff to make tortillas, and it was good. And to conclude this simply, I just enjoyed summer school because of the cooking we did as a group. And Ms. Zee and Dr. Schmidt made my experience more enjoyable for that summer.
My experience at summer school, during summer school, I learned about culture, cooking, and meeting new people. We cooked tortillas, pizza, and bread in many different recipes. We were in a group, and we, what we made was good. I met some new people, and there were some people I already knew. The teachers were new to me, and they were nice. They had, they made it fun for us. They also introduced us to how we could go to Calaveras Hills High School instead of Milpitas High School. We learned about our different cultures and foods. I learned more about my culture than I knew before. I found out about where my ancestors originally came from, and this was mostly from Hawaii. In conclusion, I made all the credit I signed up for, and I enjoyed doing it for the rest of, I guess. My mom and I decided I would go to Calaveras Hills. My experience in summer school would be just learning, meeting other people, and learning about who they were. I like, I feel like I was successful in summer school.
All right. We're going to start into our slideshow. Scott? And students, thank you so much. It's not easy for them to come up here. I think even more so for our high school students who've maybe never spoken in this type of form. So I'm very grateful they agreed to be here and share their experience. And kind of goes along with what Mr. Payne was saying earlier, just the success that students can have in our different pathways and different programs. So students, I will let you guys go home and go to sleep, and hopefully you'll, will not be late to school tomorrow. So we are excited to share with you all of the summer programming. You can tell by the people behind me, it takes a team to have a successful summer school program. And we're always iterating year after year, at least since I've been here, to really try and meet our students' needs. And I think I'll just go right into it. I'll, let's go to our next slide, Scott, and we'll start with our elementary summer programming.
Thank you.
So one of our goals here in Milpitas Unified School District is to always improve upon what we have. We continue to build on what we have and with tremendous improvement. One of the things I remember as a child is hating summer school and thinking about the children at a young age, four, all the way up to sixth grade. I'm thinking, I'm talking about the elementary level. I had to really think about, how do I engage these students? How do I leverage their curiosity? I can't get them there without bringing the teachers. So I am happy to share that our TK to third grade teachers, along with our fourth through sixth grade teachers, engaged in professional development. For TK to third grade teachers, they were, their professional development focused on developmentally appropriate practices, which meant more natural inquiry, exploration. And the fourth through sixth grade teacher professional development was provided by RAFT. So going back to our TK, the sixth grade teacher engaged in learning that focused on environmental STEAM education and STEAM oceanography. Tonight, we heard a lot of project-based learning. We heard a lot about curiosity, leveraging students' curiosity. And it looks like the secondary, they're all gone. Okay, so we're preparing them to come there. We're already developing these skills at a young age to be able to collaborate, critical thinking, practice those skills. So in the, can you go to the next slide, please? Again, the goal was to leverage our students' natural curiosity. I am very proud to highlight the success of our TK, the sixth grade students, who participated in ESY, Newcomer Program, Randall's TWIB program, or the General Education Program. Because of the dedication of all our teachers, paras and summer school administrators, our students were able to access STEAM regardless of the language proficiency level, developmental level, or regardless of what their IEP said. Every child had access to STEAM, and that was the whole goal for us this year. It took a lot of planning that began in December. We're going to perfect it one day, but we are, we're getting there. And I'm going to go ahead and pass it on to Ms. Emily, who was one of two principals at the elementary school.
So I'm actually, at this moment, going to speak on behalf of one of our SDC teachers who was not able to be here. Ms. Charm, Preet Walea, sent a statement over to us because she had hoped to be here and could not be. But she wanted to speak specifically to what it felt like to be an extended school year ESY teacher in this different model of really inclusive education from the beginning. So here's what she wrote. "This year, all the learning options and programs in summer school were very inclusive, and we used RAFT STEAM projects as the core for 20 days of instruction. The focus was to observe and help enhance collaboration skills while working on these projects. What it was like being part of the training alongside gen ed teachers as special day class teachers. This was my fourth time doing ESY, and every year is a wonderful year as we get to meet and work with new students and families. However, this year was truly exceptional as the SDC group, as the STC group was included right from the orientation and training before ESY until the last day display show. The SDC teachers now had something in common to talk with the general education teachers concerning curriculum and not just general conversation. We were able to collaborate with them to plan the unit and even to visit their classrooms to witness how their projects were coming along and getting some ideas to prepare our classes well. The last day was showcase where we were expected to display our projects, and surprisingly, I had an 80% turnout. It was such a proud moment to display their work, and the students were equally excited and eagerly awaiting their parents to come. The parents were seen admiring and praising their amazing work. They were seen clicking so many pictures, spending time at each project display, and asking questions to their child and the other students as well. Overall, it was an amazing experience to be included in the entire process and implementing it in the classroom. The slide deck was well-made and had all the necessary information from RAFT on how to begin and warm up your class, build curiosity, and maximize participation. All the projects provided hands-on opportunities. Students were seen collaborating, assisting each other, and cheering for each other. Team spirit and sense of accomplishment could be witnessed. It was a fun learning experience." And I'm going to pass the microphone to our other, another SDC teacher, Christine Simoncic.
Hi, my name is Christine Simoncic, and I was there working alongside this other teacher and the general at teachers. I haven't taught summer school in years, but for some reason this year, I decided to do it. And I was so excited to get these kits from RAFT and the slide deck and to know that my students were doing the same thing as the general ed students. One day, we started to build the windmill project, and the kids looked outside and saw the students, the gen ed students across from us, outside with the same project, and they were thrilled. And they go, I didn't believe you. I didn't think this was really what we were doing. And so after that, they, they really bought into it, the, could get them into groups to collaborate more easily. And really, the kids that don't generally like the reading and the writing and the math part of school came alive when they were working on this project. I love it. I hope that we can continue with a program like this for our kids because it's so important for our students to feel like they are just like everybody else out there. The parents loved it, too. And when they came to see the final projects, they were blown away by the way that the kids were excited about it, and they didn't want to leave until they took everything they made with them. So it was a really great experience. I hope that we can continue working with RAFT on this.
Next slide, please, Scott. Thank you so much. As Ms. Kusunoki mentioned before, so we have, one of the programs we had at corner for summer school was the newcomer program. We have four groups, TKK, first and second grade, third and fourth, and fifth and sixth. This is just some ideas about what they were doing. This is, for example, a first and second grade newcomer program. They were working again on projects and integrating science, technology, engineering, art, arts, and math. At the same time, they were building literacy skills, so phonemic awareness, phonics, kind of, a little bit of introduction to some kind of reading and how they were able to write down ideas about the projects, do the inquiry process, and go through all of that in a collaborative way. Next slide, please. The other program we had, oh, next one, so that's.
Sorry, the other administrator. Go ahead, Scott, to the one with the graph. So this is just a snapshot of some of our phonics skills. So all of our classes, TK through, TK through three, and then also our older SDC classes used our phonics curriculum. And so we did see, even though it was only 20 days, we saw significant growth, you know, in our TK students focusing really on just those basic literacy skills, being able to point to words, point to pictures, you know, turn the book the right way, that kind of thing. And with our K through two and older students really focusing on the discrete phonics skills, identifying letter sounds, being able to read CBC words and so on. And so what you see here is the beginning in the first week data set, and then in the last week data set alongside each other. So in the TK, it's the, the blue is the pre and the green is the post. And then in the other graph, you'll see kindergarten in the first two, the pre and the post, and then the purple and pink are first grade, pre and the post, and then second grade, the orange and red, pre and post. And so even though it was only 20 days, what we saw was that that explicit phonics instruction happening every day really makes an impact in students' ability to master those basic phonics skills. So in addition to the project-based learning, that all classrooms, even our extensive support needs, ESY classes, all the way to our TWIB programs and everything else, they were doing those science inquiry units. They also were focused on those literacy and pre-literacy skills as well.
Next slide, Scott, please. Now, the second program we had is, was the TWIB program. There were two groups, kindergarten first and second and third grade, and I will show you in a couple of minutes, data, specific data about how students performed during the 20 days. We had a lot of growth in reading comprehension. Some students improved between two, three, four, or six reading levels, which is really good. So they were given an assessment in Spanish, and the teachers used guided reading groups during the 20 days so that they could easily target the reading comprehension gaps that they had and work on them. And then that's why we had a lot of growth in those two classes, in kindergarten first and the second and third grade. Mr. Norwood, do you have a question?
What is the TWIB program?
Okay, T stands for two, W way, B bilingual, I immersion, two-way bilingual immersion. So it's a program that basically provides instruction depending on the grade level. There is a percentage of one language and the other one. So let's say if you start in kindergarten first grade, so you will have 90% of the day in Spanish and 10% in English, and when you get to fifth grade, you will have 50/50. So the two languages have the same status. Okay, so next slide, please. Now, another program we had was the Girl Start Program. This program was offered to students from Zenker and Weller, but then it is open to everybody. And we had 32 students representing fourth and fifth grade, and they were working in STEAM projects, so science all the time, integrating, as I told you, science, engineering, technology, math, and arts. At the end, it's only one week. It's only for five days. It's an intensive week where all the girls attending this program worked specifically on science projects. But at the same time, when, when they finished, they reflect on those five days, and the conclusion was that 90% of those girls attending this program believe that studying science, technology, engineering, and arts and math, so it's really important for them because that will give them the chance to get better jobs in the future. The other 90% also, also shared that they understand more about how integrating all those areas in science, and 80% stated that they want to continue their education. We had 126 additional girls who were on a waiting list, but because there's only five days, and the staff that they have is not enough to keep all of the 100, more than 100 students, so we only had it for 32 girls. But we do this every single year, and we provide all the logistics for them, so they have their room and then the supplies and everything. So it was a really nice experience for them, working on different projects and everything related to project-based learning and inquiry, and they were really having fun at the same time. Next one, please. Now, I'm going to show you data about the different groups that we have in TWIB and in the New Commerce Program. In TWIB, we had two groups, 24 students. In T W B, we had two groups, 24 students. They were given the developmental reading assessment, which is in Spanish, E D L two. That is the equivalent to the D R A in English. And we have that one group, the kindergarten first group, 75% of the group jumped two, four or six reading levels, which is really good. In 20 days, that is a tremendous job made by the teachers. And the other 25% improved foundational skills in reading. Now foundational skills in reading is essential because once they get the foundational skills, it is easy for them to transfer from L one to L two. When I say L one is Spanish, L two is English. So particularly, we had a tremendous growth in that group. And in the second group, which is, which was second and third grade, 58% of the students jumped two, three or four reading levels. And one of the students that we had today improved four reading comprehension levels. And the, the other 25% attended first half, 17% improved foundational skills. Again, the foundational skills are essential to make the process easier for them to transfer from one language to the other one. So the stronger, the stronger, the stronger the L one is, so in this case, Spanish, the easier for them to make the transfer, transfer to English. And in this group, second and third grade, 25% of the class attended the first half of the summer school, only 10 days. The other 10 days they did not attend because they already had some travel plans, so they were not, we were not able to assess them and see if they improved or not. Now, in the newcomer program, we have four groups, TK and Kinder, first and second, third grade and fourth, and fifth and sixth. What they were given as a way of assessing them, phonics assessment. So in TK and K, they were given a phonics assessment where we measured the reading, the phonics and phonemic awareness, so those foundational skills. And we found that 50% of TK and K show at least 90% mastery of the skills, which is really a high number. 90% mastering the skills is a high number. For being, for talking about foundational skills, this is a huge growth. And the other 44% for TK and K show at least an improvement between 70 to 89%. So both numbers and percentages are high for 20 days. It means that the instruction was provided very, in a very explicit way. And every single day, they were targeting foundational skills and also the skills that they previously identified by the end of school year. Then they had that data for the beginning of the summer school and they knew exactly how to tackle those language gaps. And in this group, TKK, 6%, it means one student was absent during testing. So we couldn't get finally a data for that student. But we, we, we not, didn't notice an improvement because the last part of the assessment was missing. And the second group was first and second grade. We tested them in 14, 14 big skills like letter sounds, syllable patterns, consonants, prefixes, suffixes, two-word syllables, three-word syllables, four-word syllables. So everything related to foundational skills. And at least 90% of the first and second grade class master the skills at 89%. And 10%, it means only one student, they achieved 90% up. Could be 90, 95, 96, 97, which shows that the, the instruction that was provided during those 20 days in the newcomer program, so was really exceptional and high quality in terms of language instruction. Next slide. Then we have, the third group is third and fourth grade. In these two, three, four, and five and six, we only assess speaking and, and writing. We didn't assess foundational skills because it is research-based that in kindergarten first and second grade, they all get the foundational skills and then in fourth, third grade, fourth, fifth and sixth, they just need a little bit of introduction into reading and writing. So we assess them in speaking and writing skills. And speaking show us that there was an improvement in grammar and vocabulary and organization of ideas and speech. 45% started to grab more language skills because remember that these students are newcomers. Some students are at the beginning stages of second language development. Others come to us with some knowledge in language. And writing, of course, they show improvement, 91% and 9% starting to feel more confident about that. And we have speaking and writing for the last group. Anyways, you see the data, the percentages, and it shows that they had a lot of improvement and growth in speaking and writing.
Okay, moving on up to secondary, my home away from home. So middle school was all about communication, connection with hints of opportunity. And so we tapped into the students' interests in all of our middle school courses that we offered this summer. And we used things like CAP-CA. I'm going to butcher all of this and it's going to show my age. But we use things like CAP-CA, which is really popular on TikTok. And we also used collaborative strategies such as Fanetakidoscope, which is one of the first forms of moving media entertainments. Now they call it CAP-CA. And then we also took the opportunity to immerse ourselves in the rich cultures, like Mr. Fairley was mentioning, in the Summer Bridge Program, to really dive into the rich cultures in Milpitas by way of food. And one of the best ways to learn is that food is one of the best lenses of culture. And so really tapping into that really supported our connection, communication with hints of opportunity for our middle school students. Next slide.
All right, so high school, we had credit recovery. We had 465 students who were enrolled in summer school this year from Milpitas High School and Cal Hills. We had 909 courses attempted with an 87% completion rate. And we had a total of 10 summer graduates, so it was great to see them, some of them this afternoon. Also, you can look in the star, it says 3,790 credits earned. That comes out to 758 classes. So those, that is the amount of classes that were recovered during summer school this year, which is fantastic. And then at the bottom, you can see a chart. It shows the different E L groups. You have the level of completion per group. R F E P, which is the reclassified students are the highest and that is similar to what we see on the standardized test scores each year also. And I'll turn it over to Herm for the special ed side.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Put this right here. So I was co-principal this summer for, for special education. So I covered the tiered special education courses that you see. The two credit recovery courses that we had were a resource, the resource program in general, the general education classes. With that, we had a case manager that assisted the students, similar to what we would do during the regular school year. We all, the other credit recovery course that we have was the essential courses, which are specific to students with I E Ps. Those are the resource courses that we also teach during the regular year. Those courses also were offered in the summer. And finally, we had our E S Y students. Those were the students who are in the C B I program, which is the community-based instruction program. Also, we had the post-secondary program. That is for the students who have graduated from Milpitas already, but they're still within our unique needs program. So those programs are on campus, the S D C, or excuse me, the C B I and the post-secondary programs. Those engaged in practice, as shown in the slide, academic and social skills. They also did daily living activities and practiced their independent skills. I would like to take some time out to recognize our summer school staff. I would like to give shout-outs to Kathy Walensky, Jen Garcia, and Suzanne Moffett for those. Those were the teachers that were working during the summer. I also like to send shout-outs to the Three Amigos, Wesley Casco, Gary De Guzman, and Theo Big Pop Papas. Those also were working with us at C B I and helping our students. Finally, I'd like to send a shout-out to our support staff. I feel that sometimes they are not recognized. We've had our aides that were working during the year also helped us during the summertime. So I feel it's important that they be recognized along with our teachers. Also, I would like to say that we did have the middle school on campus also. So I would like to acknowledge those two teachers that helped with the seventh, the middle school S D C classes, which were Mr. Mohammed Al Mandara, hopefully I said his name correctly, and Mr. Mark De La Cruz and their support staff.
We welcome any questions at this time.
Great, thank you for the presentation, board members. Any questions? I'll start us off while they're thinking of their question there and getting ready. As far as the summer graduates, I see 10 there. How many graduates could have recovered during the summer that we had, you know, accomplished, other opportunities?
We had 16 students total who were seniors this summer. We knew right away that four, though, were, we knew that four were going to need additional support in, as a fifth-year senior going into the program. So really, we were down to 12. One of the students during summer moved out of the area and then we only had one who didn't complete out of the 12.
Thank you so much. And looking at the data here and hearing about the summer program year over year, really impressed with the deep dive as far as the intentionality to really help the students at their level of their interest versus a program that says, hey, you know, you just got to take it, just recover. This is more about getting them back on track and inspiring them to continue. And that shows in the presentation. Are they, school board reps, are you ready for your question?
There, there are, the comments that the school board, student school board reps are making is that there's a lot of information, there's a lot of acronyms, and that they're going to be getting the hang of it. And as they have questions, they may email the superintendent or board communication specialist later, and then the questions will circle back around at that time until they get the hang of the meeting.
Great, thank you. And Trustee Norwood, since we have you on the mic, I know that you're very involved in summer school and looking at it year over year. Any thoughts about the, the presentation that we just received?
You know, summer school data always warms my heart, the work. And I appreciated all of the data that you were able to share. And the reason why I appreciate it, because you had to compile that data and you couldn't pull that data out of thin air at that level of detail for that number of students in so many different ways. I think about how many students we have in the district, approximately 10,000 or so. And then I think about, you know, what would a comprehensive summer school program look like for me if I could just wave a magic wand? And it would be around 1,000 students through our K-12 that are most dire in need, who need this activity. And then we have our English language learners. And then we have the students that, that three months of time, if they're not active every day, all of a sudden, they're going to come back almost with a significant amount of regression. So I'm thinking somewhere between, you know, again, 1,000, 1,500 students. And then you have your enrichment group that needs activities as well because they're hungry to learn more on an ongoing basis. So to hear that the comprehensive level of work that you all are doing, Nicole will tell you that I always think about her during the summertime. We've almost like, how do we say? I don't know what the word is, but every time that she thinks about not doing it, we, we convince her, we convinced her a couple of years ago to keep doing it so that this team could form and emerge and see the work that's happening. I also really appreciate the data on our special education students, the level of detail. Super shout-out. I don't even know if I, Mr. Wilson, I don't recall anyone coming to the podium and telling us about the shout-outs that you wanted to do to the staff during the summer school. I know it may have come up in different ways, but to have this level of team and to have the wherewithal, whether it was planned or not, to bring them into this space, to let us know that they were a part of it, was, was super important. Summer school makes a huge difference in Milpitas Unified. And I'm glad that you guys are all seeing that work at the elementary level as well as the secondary level. So thank you, President No, for the opportunity to share. Kudos to this group and kudos to the learning and development and H R for convincing them or making it happen, right? Because you have to negotiate for some of these folks to do this work. So I hope you guys are as proud as I am about the work that they did this summer.
Thank you, Trustee Norwood. And Trustee Zhang, I know that you're, you're a champion of early.
Yeah.
Education intervention.
I appreciate it. Yeah, so, so one of the things, and I won't go into details or questions about it now, but one of the things, you know, I really am, I want to piggyback on what Trustee Norwood has said. I really appreciate all the data and all the work. However, one thing I would like to sneak in here is a little bit more of the jumpstart, really preparing our kids who may not have, for example, preschool experience and getting, you know, trying to identify those kids so that we get ahead of the curve, right? That's, that's what I'm really after. And I really like to see some focus around that. But overall, I walked around to some of, checked out some of the summer school programs. I really appreciate the work. I appreciate the data. Thank you.
So just a quick question for Board Member Zhang. When you talk about the pre-K or the early, the, the jumpstart.
Yes.
Are you talking about siblings of students that are already in the district? Are you talking about residents that are in Milpitas that have pre-K students that we don't have access to? Could you, could you clarify that?
Yeah, so, so when I talk about a jumpstart, what I'm really looking at are kids who register in, you know, January through March timeframe. And we haven't really had them yet. This is, are going to be our first experience with them. And they're maybe going directly into kindergarten. And I like to see if we can identify those folks who might not have a preschool experience because there's some correlation, and you guys can check this for me, is if there's a correlation of those kids who don't have a preschool experience, they tend, they tend to kind of be a little bit behind the curve against other students. And I'd like to see if, number one, if that's true. And number two, if that is indeed true, what can we do to invest to make sure that they're not behind, right?
Can I just say something about that real quick? With the TK expansion, the age of our students are coming in younger, so we are catching them there. We also have schools, elementary schools, who are providing jumpstart, not necessarily for the, the specific group. I appreciate you bringing that up. That is certainly something that we want to look into and, and start bringing on. But we do provide jumpstart at.
Yes. Randall, Randall had a jumpstart. Yeah, I was there. So I'm familiar, but I'm just saying we, we really should try to target that particular group, those, so that all of our kids start at the right level when they get in kindergarten, right?
We'll get there.
That's good.
Thank you, Trustee Zhang.
Yep.
Fellow trustees, any more comments?
I would like to commend all your efforts. I definitely had stopped by, got a chance to look at the projects of the STEM. I mean, thank you, Rahul, for, you know, giving me a tour of different projects and different age groups and different, you know, like ethnic groups of students who were really focused on, you know, the different STEM projects. They were super excited to present their projects. So were the parents as well. So this is a great opportunity for us to be able to dive deep into what exactly has, is been going on during the recess time of our summer for the M U S D. So thank you. And it's a great teamwork and I really personally would love to see more of students getting enrolled and getting the benefit out of it. So thank you so very much. Appreciate all your efforts. Thank you. Thank you, President No.
Thank you, Booklet Rock, before you take, time check for our student board reps. It is 9:25, so you are excused if you need to leave. We want you to be in class tomorrow, but you're welcome to stay as well. With that said, Vice President Yashram, did you have any final comments?
No, I just want to echo what my colleagues have said. You know, I'm really impressed with the presentation and, you know, I just want to, you know, say that our students are very fortunate to have this team carry them through. And I appreciate all your hard work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, team. And Superintendent.
I think echoing what our trustees have said. I think echoing what our trustees have said, it's this opportunity for you to share all of the preparation and the work that occurred during the summer where our students have succeeded. I think that it needs to be a study session next year instead of a report because I know that you practice so that you could be within our time limit, but still you needed more time, so. And plus, if we have students, I think it would work better for them too. So for next year, let's put on a study session. And thank you again for the work and your investment of creating different summer opportunities for our learners.
Great, thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, team, for the report. Moving on to Item B, Business Services, update on the District's 2024-25 enacted budget. Dorothy, what can I say?
Thank you. So while Scott is pulling my few pages of slide, I wanted to let the board know that the 24-25 enacted budget, we wanna give you an update. There is no actions for you to do tonight. We just wanted to give you a little bit of update on what happened after the May revision when the governor signed the budget in July. The 24-25 enacted budget, I just wanted to highlight. Thank you, Scott. Can you move to the next page, slide, please? So there's a few highlights. I did not, I don't wanna go over the entire budget process because I just wanted something that kind of impact on our budget in, when we start working on our first interim. There is a $4 billion budget deferral in '23-24, even though this doesn't have an impact on our budget because this is only happening in paper when the, when the state closes the books. So we won't really feel that because our, because it's a deferral in paper. There's a $489 million cash and budget deferral in '24-25. So this is something that we're gonna be keeping an eye out for as soon as we get, as we get close to the end of the new school year. This is a matter of making sure that we have enough cash in our, in our bank to cover our monthly payroll expenses. As of this time, most LEA, including us, have enough cash in our bank that can cover that. So we're hoping that we don't see a significant impact on the deferral. But the deferral happens in June and July. And then, you know, the governor gives us back the money. They're just delaying the money that we're getting from them. The case, most K-12 may be exempt from this deferral depending on their financial status. And I believe we may not qualify, but we will see on the first interim. If we do, then we can be exempt on the deferral in the future. But we have to find out on our first interim. And we will have to submit this waiver or certification to the county superintendent. Also, the budget combines of Prop 98 Reserve Funds, Budget Deferrals, and appropriated funds to maintain education program. This is something that the ACSA and other organization that advocates for education to make sure that we don't lose our funding and don't lower our minimum guaranteed base funding. Next slide, please. For Prop 98, we, there's, there's no change from the May revision. And also, despite what's happening during that budget, that we are continuously getting funding for the arts and music, that was not affected. And we will be using the May revision for now for the current year allocation. For school facilities, they cut down some of the budget. They have about $875 million that was intended for '24-25. So we'll see how will that impact all the upcoming rounds of school facility grants. They also eliminated $550 million in California preschool TK and full-day kindergarten facilities grant program. So this is, these are all the programs that you have to competitively apply for the grants. So there, this is one way for them to cut the budget without impacting the money that we're, that school districts are getting.
Quick clarification. So do we have any pending grants that would be affected by this?
Not that I'm aware of. We do have an application for the, the early preschool, but it's not through the state, it's through a different organization.
I see, okay.
And we're in the process of that application.
Okay.
For special ed, our AB 602 funding is receiving the 1.07 COLA that are, we're getting from our LCFF funding. So the 1.07 increased the base rate of 896.89 per ADA for special ed. Next slide, please. So this is just to show you the LCFF funding factors. You know how they come up with the total money that we get per ADA, per grade level, using our base and our COLA and the grade span adjustment, which is the GSA that you see there, and any adjusted base grant per grade level and our supplemental LCFF. And we don't get any concentration grant because we don't have a 65% of our unduplicated pupil. And also, we get $3,077 as an add-on for TKs. Next slide, please. So this is just a reminder for the multi-year projections that you will see in the future. As always, just to remind you that the multi-year projection required by the law, it's AB 1200 and AB 2756. Projections need to be based on the current information that we have. And we just wanted to remind the board that it constantly changing as, you know, I may be presenting something projection today and it changed tomorrow. So just a reminder on that one. Next slide, please. This is the School Services Financial Projection Dartboard. So you can see there are other factors that we put into developing the budget, such as the COLA. You're all aware of the COLA, but we also consider into the CPI, CalSTRS, CALPERS. These rates, especially CALPERS, continuously increasing every year. So we consider that into our multi-year projection. We factor in all those increase in, in the rates. You can see how much money or per ADA we get for lottery, for mandate block grant as well.
Dorothy, quickly, you said, you said it could change tomorrow. That the budget could change or the projection?
The projection.
Right. How, how could it change tomorrow? Would it be the governor saying something differently about the budget? How could it change tomorrow?
I guess, I didn't want, so I guess my, my point is that the projection is based on the current information that we have. And so it could change at any given budget reporting period. If something significantly changed in our economics, for example, so that could change also. When we do the first interim projection, we will use the, the information that we have as of October 31st. And the November election could significantly change the, the outcome, the, the status of our economy, good or bad. And so by the time we do the first interim projection, we will try to see if we can capture any changes that may happen. And, and then when we present it to you in January, in December, it may not be the most accurate information because we will wait for the governor's proposal in January, governor's budget proposal. So I guess what I'm saying is there's constant changes happening at the Capitol. So it may not change tomorrow instantly, but it could change in any given time in the future.
So you're saying that there are, so you'll provide a report and then the next time, there's, there are some things that could occur economically or with the governor making some changes based on the budget that he's required to approve, that the next time that you report, the numbers could be different. But it's always, but every so often, when you have the opportunity to report to the board, there may have been things that occurred between those two reporting times that could change the projection that you provide here.
That is correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next slide, please. So the road ahead for us, that the state is, we obviously know, facing shortage in some innovative strategies to support education programs. So we, I believe that, you know, our, one of our goal as, you know, in Milpitas is that we are very resourceful in, in finding other resources because we know we can't fully rely at the, on the state level 100% for the things to meet our expectations. So, but we will be keeping an eye on that one, what kind of changes they'll be making in the budget. The, again, the, the November general election is ahead of us. And the next state budget proposal will be released in January 2025. And we will present the first interim to you as of October 31st on our December 16 board meeting. Also, that's the time that we will be seeking your approval on the budget for first interim. Next slide. If there's any other questions.
Board members, any other questions?
Uh, one question. I understand that the, you know, when you're putting together a budget, you have things that you know. You have things that are kind of into works, which are assumptions. And then you have variables that you don't really control, which is kind of the economy, the election, et cetera, right? Do you think it's, would be useful, at least in my mind, you know, to say, at this point in time, these are things we know? And here are some assumptions that could make our life interesting? And then sort of the things that we see that potentially has an impact on us, but that we have zero control? Is that an easy way to present that?
I guess it wouldn't hurt to include it in the presentation.
I'm just trying to, because I think, because like Trustee Norwood was asking, like, what do you mean it can change, right?
Yeah.
But if you think about it, those are kind of the variables involved. There are things that you absolutely know because someone already decided. But then there's these assumptions that haven't been decided and can go either way. And then there's variables you can't control. So I, I just was thinking that that would be an easy way for us as a board to understand, okay, we got this, but here are the things that are gonna make life interesting, right?
Definitely. So if, if that's something that will help the board understand better the other potential, you know, situations that we have no control over. But whether we use it as part of our projections or not, that's something that we can share with the board in the first interim. So, and, and then we can call out what we included in our projection and what we didn't.
Right.
And we'll give you the rational why.
Right, yeah. At least that's, at least for me, that would make, you know, as we do the projections, it would make it kind of clear, okay, this is kind of the, the jello that we have to play in with. So, so I get that, so.
Just a suggestion.
It's noted.
I, I think to further enhance on that, when the state does the revision, they typically provide rationales of what specifically caused them to lower the projections or increase the projections. So at least a few of those bullet points as far as when you give us our, the updates to us so that we understand why that budget was revised based on whatever projections. That would help as far as understanding which of the buckets we would need to focus on.
Yes, yes.
With that said, does the governor's revised budget have any impact on our local parcel tax?
No, the local parcel tax, are you talking parcel tax or property taxes?
Parcel.
Parcel tax. It doesn't have any impact on our parcel tax because it's, like I said, it's local and we control that. That is something that we have control over. The state cannot take away that money or they cannot touch that because it is by law controlled by Milpitas Unified School District.
Thank you for that because that, that's an important factor of parcel tax, right? Where we control it locally and the state can't take it
They cannot.
like they do with these other supplemental funding and block grants and whatnot.
That is correct.
Any other questions, board members? Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Moving to Item C, Superintendent's Office, the MUSD Foundation.
Thank you, President No. At our last, it may have been our first board meeting in June, but at our board meeting, one of the board meetings in June, Trustee Young asked to bring to the board agenda, the opportunity for the board to discuss potential of a foundation for MUSD. And so what I provide in the background of this agenda item is is some examples of other school districts that have formed foundations. Some that are, have been established for a while, some that are recently established, such as the Morgan Hill Education Foundation. I also shared that the Milpitas Alliance Partners for Free Learning is set up where it could be the beginning of a foundation. And I shared to, can you move it up, please, Scott? Thank you. I also shared that an alternative to the school district creating its own foundation, that the school district could also do a request for proposals for an existing foundation to provide the services to a district, such as ours. Some of the things to keep in mind around foundation work is, one, it can be leveraged to provide a 501(c)(3) so that when the district is seeking donations from entities such as a bank that may not give it to, directly to the school district, even though we're a nonprofit because their parameters only allow for giving directly to a 501(c)(3), it would create an avenue for that that is within the school district's purview. And the other aspect is that if the school district creates its own foundation, there is the opportunity to assure that the goals of the foundation match the strategic goals and mission and vision of the district. And the district also would have an active representative on the board of that foundation. Whereas if we do a request for proposals for an outside foundation, we will need to make, we would simply need to put those in as the parameters for selection or criteria, if that's what the board wanted to do. So it's open for the board to discuss the opportunity to either take initiative to create our own foundation or look at a request for proposals for a third-party foundation to do that or to not take any action towards creating a foundation. I will say that the board knows in doing a Capitol campaign for the Innovation Campus, it's essentially been myself and the five of you. And periodically, we've had some people who have been able to write grants, but those, again, don't go directly for the building, they go for the programming. again, don't go directly for the building, they go for the programming. So having a foundation would create an arm that would support us in things such as a capital campaign.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. Trustee Young, since you had asked for this in general, I'll give you the floor first.
So, so if we look at what, as a district, we're trying to accomplish in terms of, you know, things in, in terms of Innovation Campus, things in terms of parcel tax, et cetera. And we look at our, our neighbor in school districts, there's 31 school districts within the Santa Clara County. We are one of 11 school districts that does not have a foundation. That is, at least in my opinion, a disadvantage for our school district. We should, in my opinion, have a partner as a foundation to provide things such as what the others foundations provide for their particular school districts. So it could be such that those school districts that have foundations, they, those foundations provide what I consider long-term relationships. Those long-term relationships can help especially, for example, as we grow out our MAP program, especially when we start to think about how do we do a capital campaign? A capital campaign is not a one-year event, it's a multi-year event in terms of being a champion for our school district from a community perspective. And having that foundation, in my opinion, will allow us to leverage those resources that are outside our school district, but working for a common goal, a shared vision of what we want to create in terms of Milpitas Unified. So that's, that's my kind of foundation as to why we, or my reasons for why I think we need to have a foundation. I would encourage that our foundation should be loco because it is, as you look at other foundations, they support locally. I also believe that it is essential to have a local foundation because they're gonna, that the people involved in that foundation should be volunteers, should be champions of our school district. And I, I think having those components of how, putting together a foundation is essential. As Cheryl says, you know, that foundation has to be a 501(c)(3), in my opinion, because it provides, you know, companies, individuals, states, et cetera, to provide those benefits from a tax perspective. That gives them that additional reason to participate. So those, those are some of the key points for a foundation.
Thank you, trustee Young. There was an ask of whether we build this organically or do a request for proposal. I didn't quite understand, based on your thoughts, which way you would go.
So the, the way most foundations are built, they're partners, they're, so foundations generally are separate organizations outside of the school district that partner in with the school district. Good analogy would be having a PTA for a particular school. The school is part of our school district, the PTA is generally speaking, an independent organization that chooses to, chooses to be a partner with that particular school and works for the common good for that particular school. So the foundation similarly, in my view, would be a 501(c)(3) organization that shares the common goals that we have as a school district and is willing to participate, voluntarily participate to achieve those particular goals. That help?
From a clarity perspective, no, trustee Young, but I appreciate your feedback. We'll continue the discussion. Actually, Executive Director Preeti Johari, remind, was there language in our LCAP that, in regards to foundations or working with foundations?
Sorry, I realize me nodding no does, we're in a board meeting. No, there is not specific language in the LCAP around that because the LCAP focuses on our LCFF funds.
There is board policy though, which is linked in this background information.
I thought when we were working on that community engagement piece in the LCAP, that we were talking about, you know, looking to bring additional partnerships with outside organizations, potentially foundations.
So in terms of like developing a newcomer, newcomer program, or we, we definitely partner with foundations and organizations, you see that in all the consent items we bring to you, but with regards to this specific foundation and how it would move forward, there's not guidance there. I would defer to Superintendent Jordan there.
Yep. I didn't see that, I didn't read that in the LCAP, however, that might have been your interpretation and you were a part of the committee. So I'm wondering, Executive Director, there might have been others. However, I suppose the, the bottom line is if that is in there, this is just what I hear in your ask, President Noe, is, is there already some sort of initiative in one of our policy documents like the LCAP that provides authority, I think there's a different word for it, but I'll just say authority for now, for us moving forward and finding, developing a foundation of some sort? Is that what you were asking?
Yeah, I'm looking for synergy, right? Between the things that we're working on, plus the, the ask from trustee Young as far as developing a community foundation. We, we talked about a little bit about setting the priorities to match our district goals. Again, if there was specific language as far as including the LCAP, again, for specific programs, but in the sense of where do we look for those additional funding sources? If that is the case, then that would provide us as a board a little bit more push to say, hey, let's pursue this because it's something that we want to see within the next three years to accomplishing the LCAP.
Remember, President Noe? Oh, I'll wait till the rest of the board chimes in on this topic.
Thank you, trustee Norwood. Word clerk Naka, do you have any thoughts?
I'm, thank you for all the groundwork and all the information that you're able to provide, trustee John. I was wondering, you know, is there any specific foundational foundations that you think or you have in mind which align with our policies as MUSD locally? Because, you know, some of the 501(c)(3)'s that I have known or been part of locally are like, you know, I mean, specific to certain areas where they try to contribute? So is it something that you can share more about what you think would be ideal enough for MUSD to partner with? If...
Okay.
I can help with that. I think what I've heard from trustee Young was that this is an opportunity to build a foundation or partner with a foundation that will be specifically aligned with the goals of the district, while other current foundations that are in our community might not have that same mission goal. It takes a little bit more to convince them to change their mission goals or allow us to be potentially a member representative of their boards because we would like to have at least some say.
Yes.
We're directing funds to that foundation. If there is an organization that is willing to open their doors up, that's what we can explore. But in this instance, in this ask, it's about building that foundation out towards our particular purpose.
Yes, oh, I mean, I would definitely encourage us doing that because we are just building the foundation and then partnering with any existing foundation, which again, opens up doors for any alignment of the, of our goals, would be a win-win, definitely. So that, that definitely should be a consideration as to partner with the local, yeah, foundation, for sure. Rather than having just the MUSD foundation as 501(c)(3), I think that could be expanded just to have the investment of the community into our goals.
I think that's step two. Word clerk Naka?
Yeah.
Step one is obviously to establish the foundation.
Yeah, for sure. Oh, yeah. I am definitely, yes, for...
So thank you for thinking ahead. Vice president, Yishwan, any thoughts?
Yeah, when I, I'm hearing a lot of, you know, pros, why we should have a foundation, but at the same time, I'm also weighing out, what are the cons? What are the disadvantages? What's the cost involved and the time involved to start our own or if that versus, you know, partnering with somebody?
So, so I guess my view is, I'm not really proposing that the district starts a foundation because it gets a little tricky because the, a district managed foundation is, could have challenges with conflicts of interest. The only way that I see this working is really a partner with an existing foundation or a foundation that closely aligns with what we want to do. It is, and, and I'm not an attorney, but I know enough about nonprofits that it would be difficult for our district to, in effect, build its own foundation. It has to be a partnership from my viewpoint.
Thank you.
And...
Thank you, trustee Young, because I answered the earlier question that I had.
Right, yeah, that's, that's what I was going to say. Did, did that help with the previous question?
Yes. Trustee Norwood.
Thank you, board member Young, for bringing, keeping this discussion alive in terms of how does the Milpitas Unified School District work to secure additional resources for the school district in, in, in methods that are proven that happen in public education? I am, I'm aware, and, and thank you for bringing up the point, that of the 31 school districts in Santa Clara County, 20 of them have, 20 of them are associated with, because to say they have a foundation, you have to look at the, the business structure of the relationship between the school district and the education foundation. We, just for, for clarification, Milpitas Unified School District has a number of relationships with foundations where we do receive funds through them that they donate to us. Quanis has a foundation, Nisa Columbus who has funding, and so all foundations, to my knowledge, I'm not aware of any for-profit foundations, but part of their status is nonprofit because they are receiving funds to redistribute them, either through direct service or grants as well.
Right.
So we wouldn't, in, in pursuit of, let's say, for example, Milpitas Alliance Partners moving in the direction of becoming a foundation, taking it from, because it's conceptually now an idea about how do we build relationships with the community and gather corporate partners and resources from those corporate partners, from the genesis of the idea coming from within the school district, I'm in agreement because it, it aligns with all the documentation and all the things that have been created around the Alliance Partners for Future Ready Learners. I, I would also add that a school district does have the ability to have a direct relationship, a fiscal relationship with the foundation, and I think that Dorothy would be able to talk a little bit to that because of what Metro Ed has, because Metro Ed does have a foundation. So if, if you would be so kind, Dorothy, to share a little bit about your understanding of the Metro Ed Foundation, that would be great.
Metro Ed is, the Metro Ed Foundation has its own board members and, but they work side by side with the superintendent to make sure that the board's goals, vision is aligned with the, with Metro Ed. And they always invite the superintendent every time they have a board meeting and they always align all the fundraising that they're doing based on whatever program it is. For example, they would raise some money to provide some kind of tool belts for the students in adult ed who graduated, taking the CTE classes in the evening or daytime in construction or other programs. So those are the things that the foundation had helped in raising the funds based on the guidance that they get from the superintendent.
So, so the idea of Milpitas Unified School District providing direction to the superintendent to, one, put together an RFP for foundation potentially partners is, would also allow us to figure out the design of a foundation if we decided to create a separate business entity, nonprofit within the school district, which would be managed by our business services or in partnership with business services. Because the, the dollars that are coming through the foundation to the school district, that we would want to make sure that there was fiscal accountability. The foundation could raise funds and we not be privy to that. So having that relationship with either a board member or a fiscal relationship with the foundation to make sure that the dollars came strictly to the school district would, could potentially be a part of that RFP design.
Also, board member Norwood, when I was the CBO at Metro Ed, I also attend their board meetings, so I can hear all the fundraising that they would discuss. And they had a couple of consultants that they hired to run some of the programs and they touch base with me all the time to make sure that they, they get, if they're racing for a specific project or, or something, that they get the amount from me, so they know how much. For example, if it includes staffing, for example, or paid for a certain programs, then they collaborate with us and with me so that we can come up with the amount. And then at the same time, when, when we receive the funds, we give them a report to say, these are the students who receive whatever, it could be a scholarship or, like I said, tool belts. So we provide them a financial reports for transparency and financial reporting. And, and so I think me attending the, their meeting is helpful, so I know where they're at in terms of their fundraising and whatever projects that they want to run and, and raise money for. And so we can, that's something that we can, you know, for example, include in our budget. If we're projecting that they'll be raising money for specific programs, then we can put it in our, in our, in our budget, in our projection that we, you know, that's the money that they're raising, so.
Thank you. So with some of the new folks that I, so what I heard today in our board meeting with our new assistant principal at the Milpitas Extension, and then also the gentleman that joined, that's going to be the assistant principal coordinator position at Cal Hills, both of these folks are, with their experience seems in combination with the superintendent as well as our assistant superintendent of business services, that's the formation right there of, of an internal group that can move this conversation forward in terms of possibly the best ways to proceed. So if, if I were to, well, I will say that I am in favor of moving forward with looking at exploring, moving forward with the creation of a foundation from the Milpitas Alliance Partners for Future Ready Learners in parallel to developing the RFP so that we can continue to learn what we don't know about the, the best model or infrastructure for Milpitas Unified to have a foundation.
I was just looking at the, at three of the links that I provided there, Saratoga Ed Foundation and Berry-Santa Clara. They all, and they're about us, they all say that they were formed by a group of parents, a group of people within that school community for the purpose of supporting the school district's programs and to bridge the gap between public funds and with the school, with the school needs. So my opinion is that whether we initiate creating a foundation through a group of people who are interested in doing that, or put a request for proposals, I think that it's essential that the foundation is going to support the school district's vision, mission, goals, financial needs. goals, financial needs, initiatives, and that there are members of the, perhaps like a member of the school board and a member of the governance team, like the CBO and superintendent, that they are also part of that foundation, either on the actual board as they are in other school district foundations, or as CBO or KNSA described with MetroEd, they're always a part of those board meeting discussions.
Right, and, and I would agree. I, I would, I would be a little cautious in terms of the district find, you know, trying to build its own foundation, because to me, there is potential conflicts of interest. If we find a partnership and have in the partnership include the superintendent, a board member or, or her rep in terms of, you know, being on something like a advisory board, that reduces the conflict of interest challenge. And as long as that mission statement of that particular foundation is in sync with what we're trying to do here at the district, I, I think that's our best, best shot at creating or having a foundation to, to serve our needs.
I just want to clarify something. When I say the district have its own foundation, I'm talking about the district initiating a group of people to create the foundation, not that the district creates a foundation made up of its own employees. And so, therefore, I don't see it as a conflict of interest, particularly since-
Got it.
-we have 20 other school districts that have foundations that are similar to that setup.
Okay, and, and that's, that's, that's fine. I guess the question that I would have is, especially for RFPs, help me understand what that is, because to me, RFPs tend to be transactional and not long-term. And in my mind, we want to, we want to partner for a long-term that allows us to create long-term relationships with the community, with businesses, so that they can feed into the things that we want to do as a school district.
What you just said is exactly one of the criteria that could be indicated in the request for proposals. When you do a request for proposals, you're outlining what the criteria is of what the district is looking for in a partner. And so, the partner, if the wants to put in a proposal to be that school district's partner, they understand upfront, this is the criteria that the school district has set forth for the partner, the type of entity that it would want to partner with.
Also, I want to mention that at MetroEd, in their bylaws, it says that the superintendent has the, is the main, like the top role player on how to guide the foundation's direction, make sure it's aligned with the school district.
Thank you for the discussion, Board Members and Executive Cabinet. As I listen, I hear the simplified version of either we give direction to seek a group of volunteers to do it, or we go the RFP route to, to find the partners of existing foundations to, to meet the requirements that, that we have.
Yes.
I would also look at, in any RFP to, to have them provide us with their financials for the last two years, so that we don't partner with a foundation that is floundering or on the cuffs of, of solvency. And so, I heard direction from Trustee Norwood and Trustee Jung. Board Clerk Nakka, do you have a direction?
I'm fine.
Okay. Vice President Yipchwan?
Well, I'm, you know, listening to the discussion and, you know, we have some partners that we already are in a relationship with, you know, just one here today is the Quanis, where, you know, Superintendent Jordan and Trustee Norwood they're involved in. I mean, is that something more simpler to do, having that relationship with them to be our partner? That open for discussion with them at all, or?
I think if we go the RFP, we would encourage them to go and submit, you know, their proposal to, to work with the district staff.
Yep. If we go that route, that's what I-
Yeah, I'd probably add to that, Kelly. The, there are, there are degrees of foundations. There are foundations that brings in, that bring in tens of thousands, 500s, and there are foundations that are whale hunters, that they're really looking to bring in a variety of dollars and resources, and these are organizations, they're not solely volunteer organizations. Like, for example, the Silicon Valley, Silicon Valley Community Foundation, largest foundation in, for a while, it was the largest foundation in the world as of like last, mid-last year, I don't know if it's still the same. Silicon Valley Community Foundation, Silicon Valley Education Foundation, they have over a $9 million budget, full staff. And, and, and they use a significant portion of that budget giving back to school districts by providing direct service programs during the summer and the school year. Eastside Education Foundation, newly formed by Manny Barbera, who used to be at Silicon Valley Education Foundation, and a bunch of retired superintendents that, or principals that were involved in Eastside. And they partnered with Gear Up, which is a national organization, and they've raised over $5 million that they're gonna put back into, and now that's a primarily all-volunteer organization, but they do have a few staff members. So, the idea of, when we talk about world-class education and what we want to do in Milpitas, the, the Quanis organizations and those types of things will continue to give to Milpitas Unified, but will they ever decide that they want to go to that next level in terms of the other foundations that would be really attractive, are really attracted to be able to bring funds to the Milpitas Unified School District?
Yeah, and, and also, you know, our partners such as Quanis or even Rotary, you know, if, if you look at their mission statements, they're not gonna be, when, when I look, when I think of a foundation, at least for Milpitas Unified, their mission should be to support Milpitas Unified. It, it cannot be, well, of its Rotary, its, you know, some service organization or, or Quanis or whatever, you know, it, it should be a organization who's willing to say that our mission and goals is either very closely aligned or, if not, strictly to support Milpitas Unified School District, right? So, I, I would, you know, I want those organizations as partners, but I don't know if I would treat them strictly as a, you know, a, a foundation for our school district.
Got it. That's a good point. Does it all limit the amount of money that we can get to our school district? And-
Yeah, and, yeah, also, the, the other organizations have potentially other things that they need to do, and they, but in, in terms of a foundation for a school district, that particular foundation is basically dedicated to our school district, right? Just like a PTA is gonna be dedicated to that particular school. That's the, the level of commitment that at least I would want from a foundation.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice President Yipchwan. So, it sounds like we have direction for the superintendent to-
Why restate it?
Huh?
Want to just restate the direction?
I was getting there. So, the direction to the superintendent is to proceed with exploring the partnerships with potential foundations through RFP, but at the same time, have selective individuals to be part of a core committee to continue to, to explore as a Plan B, whether or not we would create one on our own if we don't get the right proposals coming in. Are we in line with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Just in terms of my timeline, and also staff's timeline, we have the master educational plan, and we also have parcel tax education work to do. So, I don't see myself investing time on this until, really heavily investing time on it until probably November.
So, I would recommend that you include the concept or the process of the education foundation in the educational master plan. And then, as you flesh out that language, that'll tie into all the other pieces, including the Milpitas, the MUSD Alliance Partners component of the educational master plan, so that it all flows together.
I was trying to get it on the three-year cycle, but apparently it's not in the LCAP. Moving to next action item, we are on 18 action, excuse me. Yes. Item 18, action items, Business Services, Adopt Resolution 2025.6, Support of Application for Eligible Determination and Funding Authorization to Sign Applications and Associate Documents. Dorothy, you recognize? Go ahead.
This board resolution is just to update the authorized signer, because as a new chief business officer, we, for future applications of our grants, that you're authorizing, you're authorizing to add me as a signer, and we are having remove assistance, former assistant superintendent Wendy Jung as the authorized signer and adding me as a new one. So, in that, for that purpose, we have to create a new board resolution, naming me and the superintendent as the authorized signer for those grants application, I should say.
Thank you, Dorothy. Scott, do we have any public comments?
Oh, we have no public comment at this time.
Any questions, Board Members?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Resolution is passed. Thank you so much. Item B, Learning and Development, Conduct a Second Reading and Adopt Proposed New Language 6146.4, Differential Graduation and Competency Standards for Students with Disability.
Yes, good evening. This is, we are bringing back this board policy. We mentioned in June when we brought it for first reading, that this is part of new legislation that allows for our students to take alternative assessments, to be able to work towards an alternative pathway to a diploma. As a result of education code and laws that were passed last year, we do need to update this policy. The policy has not changed. We brought forth in June the drafted language from CSBA's language, and we are bringing that forth again for your consideration and approval this evening.
Thank you, Mary Jew. Scott, do we have any public comments?
We have no public comment at this time.
Board, do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt the proposed new policy.
Second.
Any additional questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Second reading is conducted. Item two, Conduct One Reading and Adopt the Proposed, sorry, go back, policy is adopted. So, Item Two, Conduct One Reading and Adopt the Proposed Revisions to Existing Board Policy 6146.1, Graduation Requirements.
Yes, we would, since this is an existing policy and an update to it, we ask that you do one reading and then adopt it.
Thank you. Scott, do we have any public comments?
We have no public comment at this time.
Since this is the first reading of this item, can you please pull it up on the, the screen, Scott? Thank you, Scott, and that is available on our agenda for anyone to, to read through, if they would like to. Since there are no public comments, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any additional questions? Hearing none. All those in favor in adopting the proposed resolution?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The revisions are adopted. Thank you so much. Item C, Human Relations, Accept Sunshine Proposal from the California School Employees Association, Chapter 281, Initial Proposal for Successor Agreement Contract to Milpitas Unified School District. Damon James.
Good evening. It's time to look at the successor contract for our California School Employees Association Number 281 with the district, and so, we ask that you authorize and receive the sunshine proposal from CSCA Chapter 281, and it'll follow with a public hearing the next board meeting.
Thank you, Damon.
Mr. James, could you define a successor agreement contract?
Sure. We have a three-year term agreement with CSCA and MUSD, and so, that expired at the end of June, and so, we are now in need of updating our contract. So, the agreement term is for another three years.
Thank you.
Scott, do we have any public comments?
We have no public comment at this time.
Do I have a motion to accept the sunshine proposal?
Motion to accept.
I'll second.
Any additional questions? Hearing none. We are missing one board member, so we'll have to do roll call. Scott?
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Jung?
Aye.
Vice President Yipchwan?
Aye.
President, no.
Aye.
Passes 40 with one abstention.
Thank you. Item Two, Accept Sunshine Proposal, Milpitas Unified School District, Initial Proposal for Successor Contract to California School Employees Association, Chapter 281.
So, C1 was CSCA's proposal to the district, and C2 is Milpitas Unified District's proposal to CSCA. So, like the other, we ask that you receive this successor proposal. And then, and approve it after next week, after the next board meeting's public hearing.
Great. Thank you, Damon.
Motion to accept sunshine proposal, Milpitas Unified School District to, to assess, for the successor contract to the CSCA Chapter 281.
Second.
Scott, do we have additional public comments?
We have no public comment at this time.
All right. Board Members, any additional questions?
They need to-
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The proposal is accepted to sunshine. Item 19, Consent Items Are Considered Routine and Will Be Acted, Will Be Acted Upon by the Board in One Motion. There is no discussion on these items prior to the motion unless board members, members of the board, staff, or public request that specific items be tabled or removed for discussion or correction. Board Members, are there any specific items to pull?
There was, during the public comment, there was a request from the public for-
Yes, to pull Consent Item C2 and Consent Item B8. And I would like to also pull Item A10.
So, that, or, or President, you had items to be pulled, or, how did you frame, how did you phrase that again?
Yeah, so, Item A10, B8, and C2. So, A10 is the Sweareton Change Orders for the MHS Performing Arts Center. B8 is the agreement between Solient Health and Milpitas Unified School District, and C2 is that personnel report.
So, I believe that, I wasn't, I don't recall, were they asking for B2 and C8 to be tabled, or would they, they were asking them to be pulled? be tabled, or would they, they were asking them to be pulled for, or removed?
They were asking for one item, I can't remember which one, one item to be investigated, and the other item to, their comment was that they felt like they were overstaffed.
So they didn't, they didn't, they didn't specify, they didn't specify the action to be tabled, removed, but they did, they said investigated?
Yes, C2 was the overstaff. B8, that was Sherry Ames, and she wanted it to be investigated.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve all consent items minus those three items.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Scott, do we have any other public comments?
We have no public comment at this time.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Consent items are approved except for A10, B8, and C2. So we'll move on to item A10, the Swinerton change orders, number two and three for the MHS Performing Arts Center. Good evening, President No, members of the board and executive...
Mr. Forster, could you please put it up on the screen? I believe there's an attachment.
This is log number two, and then there was also another one.
I can speak to this first. The other one is just one standalone.
Let me see what the question is.
Yes, I could give some background, or I could just ask for a question, or answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, no, thanks for being here today, Travis. As we know, when we look at change orders, we're very mindful of those because we have certain limited amount of dollars towards the projects that we're trying to get completed for these different phases. As we were looking at the spreadsheet, you know, a little bit more in-depth explanation between the two columns, right, as far as the original amount and the approved amount, I think you explained it one time before, but it's been several months since we've seen this, and so could you help explain as far as the numbers that we're seeing?
Yeah, absolutely. So a couple things of background, there's four things that trigger a change order. As you know, it's, it's errors and omissions of the architect, unforeseen conditions, if you're digging and you find a pipe, requirements of an outside agency such as the city of Merced or Milpitas, over here for the offsites or PGD and that sort of thing, or district requested add. So your change orders are going to fall into one of those four categories. On a lease-leaseback contract, you'll have contingencies and allowances built into that contract at the time you award the contract, and that covers those change orders. So lease-leaseback also has change orders, you just pre-allowed a contingency allowance to cover those. In this case, where we went low bid, rather than lease-leaseback and got a really good number, some eight, eight or nine million dollars lower than the lease-leaseback, the contingencies are now outside of the contract with Swinerton. So that's why we bring them to you periodically for your review and approval. So it's the same, only different in the sense that the allowance and contingency is outside of the master contract. So what we do for these change orders is we first review them for, is this merited, right? So do we look at it, does it fit into one of those four categories, right? Because oftentimes we'll find one and say, well, this is a change order, and we'll say, well, no, it's right here on the plan. So you wouldn't see that on your, you wouldn't see it on your worksheet here, you wouldn't see it on the spreadsheet where the ones where we push back and they said, yeah, this, this change order is canceled. I'd be happy to report out on those, maybe the next time I report on the ones where we push back and they become a zero sum, and there's a multitude of those. Then we evaluate it for, is this good value, right? So in an instance, one good example, is there some extra waterproofing required? As you know, we have a 12-foot deep orchestra pit going in that requires a lot of waterproofing. There was some reconfiguration of that, and some instruction to the contractor to do some additional work. So the subcontractor came back with a price, our team goes out and evaluates that, okay, well, you're charging us for maybe 800 square feet of additional waterproofing, and what we're seeing is 150 square feet of additional waterproofing, so we push back on those types of change order. We say, no, that's, that's not good value, you're not billing us for what you're, you know, you're not doing the work you're billing us for. So we push back on those. And if we find a change order to be very unreasonable, so they say, we're going to do another, you know, 500 square feet of this gray material for, for here, and you know the price is unreasonable, you can, I know from my history, you can go Google it and find out it's unreasonable, then you do what's called time and material change order. So time and material change order says, yes, we know the work is warranted, the extra work is warranted, but we don't feel your price is right, so we're going to have you do that on time and material. So you're going to track your hours, you're going to track the equipment you use, you're going to track the material you need to purchase to facilitate that change. And so that's how we determine whether or not a change order is legitimate, whether it's fair, and whether it's price right. If it's not price right, we have a means of, it's called a force account, that you can make them do the work on time and material. They can't object to that. So that's how we come to these prices. There's a couple here that were a little higher, and we pushed back on, and the price went down. And the one that's a standalone actually started out at over $70,000 on change order three, which is now, when, when the, when the first conversation came out, you'll see the same number in both columns on that one, but when the first conversation came out, they'll give you what's called a ROM, a rough order of magnitude, it was in 70-something thousand, we immediately pushed back on that. And the reason for that change order is just that we had approved plans, we sat on those plans for about a year and a half or two years, then we got a contract going to get this thing built, and the HVAC units that were specified for that building were no longer available, they're obsolete. And then we had to switch to a different HVAC unit, which triggers a multitude of different things. Duct work comes out in a different place, the size of the curb is smaller or larger, structural steel may have to be put in its place because it might be heavier. Those are things that are kind of unavoidable, and so we evaluate for those four things, and then if they're under 50,000, we have them move forward. Over 50,000, I think the agreement was to bring those as a standalone PCI. And I can tell you, with board approval of these tonight, will be about 635,000 in change orders for this project, which is currently 1.5%. So we're, we're tracking very well for new construction, actually. You're anticipating about 5% typically on new construction. Thank you, Travis. Board members, any other additional questions?
So Travis, I, if I remember correctly, our target opening is spring of 2026, is that right for this?
No, it will be fall, right now we're tracking for fall of '25.
Twenty-five, okay.
Yeah.
So with these particular change orders of the whole project, would you say we're, what, 30% done, 40% done?
Um...
Fifty percent done?
That's a good question. We're not 50% done. Where we are currently, I'll give you a little update on the classroom side, which we're calling Building B, where we have orchestra, band, and coral, structural steel's up, they're starting to frame that in, slabs all in. The other part of it, the A part, where the actual theater is, the black box, is much more complex because there's concrete that steps down, the orchestra fits in, waterproofing's in, elevator pits in, one more exterior slab. So they are going to start putting CMU block, this is a, the big part of this building's 54 feet high, a CMU concrete block, and they're going to start one section of that this week, that block just got delivered. And so we're tracking right now for probably, I'll say, fall of '25. And so our biggest hiccup going into this was that we let the contract out just before fall of '24, right? Well, when we get this year, we got a lot of rain, and even though we lime treated the soil, which was really to our advantage, where you till lime into the soil, when you do get a rain event, it dries out within a day or two, maybe three max, and you can go back to work. You don't lime treat, if it rained every four days, you might as well rain every day. And so we had 60 rain days built into this contract schedule, and we've used 57 of them so far. That's how rainy it was this winter. And so now we're pushing hard to get a building envelope up. It's a little less impactful if you get rain the second year because you have a structure in place, and it's really more impacting site work than anything else. So yeah, fall of '25 is my short answer.
Okay. So, and how much did we plan for change orders, because this is outside the contract?
Yeah, I think they set aside, my understanding is 2 million they set aside for change orders, yeah, and we're, we're trying very, very hard, which we would, no matter what that number is, we would try to keep change orders to an absolute minimum.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Trustee Young. Trustee Norwood, did you have other comment?
Yeah, I can ask my, I'll ask my question off. I remember you had, when we went this route, there was an additional investment in either a technology or something?
Yes. Yes, and I can tell you, there's been some huge advantage to doing that, so...
Could you, could you remind the board what that was and that purchase in the...
So early on, so, so in the front-end docks, because we were tight on budget, we removed from the front-end docks a requirement to do BIM modeling. And so what BIM modeling is, is, is on a computer, you can go to the computer, you bring all your subcontractors, and then they populate the program with these plans. And what you're looking for, you'll see these ducts, you'll see the basketball goal standards, you'll see the speakers, fire alarm, lights, all of the components of the building get pushed into this plan, right? And what they, what they're looking for is conflict. So they're looking for, okay, does that duct work run into that basketball standard? And it's so much easier to, to find it and fix it with a click of a mouse than when you got a guy up there on a scissor lift going, it doesn't work. So sometimes it results in change orders because they see this conflict, and maybe you've got to route another 20-foot of duct work around. Sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes it, it results in saving you a change order because it says on the computer, well, you know what we're going to do? We're going to move that duct over three feet, and we're going to move that duct over three feet, and then we've saved a change order by doing the BIM modeling. And so that's the advantage to doing that.
Let me clarify, so you did use BIM modeling in this?
Well, we pulled it out of the front-end docks, so we didn't require it as part of the bid, the base bid. Then we lobbied back and forth, the price came in at about $400,000, and, and the Swinerton agreed to bring it down to 200 and do it at a discounted rate because they felt there was value for them too. So we presented that to the board, would you be willing to pay the $200,000? We don't consider that a change order, we consider that a service we're paying for. And so the board did approve that, and I believe the board made a very good decision in that because we're realizing a lot of benefit from it. And, and, and to your point, Mr. Norwood, sometimes, yeah, you realize something and it triggers a change order, but more often than not, it's going to, it's going to save you a change order.
So the, so the BIM modeling piece was a service that we got as a preventative measure for change orders?
Yes.
Which Board Member Young is referring to based on the cost that we were experiencing. So you're saying if we wouldn't have put that 200,000 toward that service, this number would be potentially much higher?
Potentially much higher, correct. And I think it was, it was a really good move on, on the board's part to approve this because this being a performing arts center, it's a one-off. This isn't something, you know, Foley, I wouldn't pay money to do BIM modeling in Foley because they built 25 of these things. They know where everything goes. And so, but for something that's a one-off, it's a specialized building, it's never been built before, we've designed it to what our end users wanted, our band folks and choir and the theatrical folks and all that, they all had input in it. So that's, it's a specialized building for sure.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions, board members?
No.
I don't have questions, but I would like to have a request for Travis to come back and give us, you know, updates on their bond projects.
Sure. And I would also tell the board that right now we backfilled around that orchestra pit and the foundation, so in the coming weeks, it's a flat, safe surface, so at any point that you want to either reach out to me individually and tour the site, or if, if you can do it as a board and it's legal without a quorum, or however you do it, we are happy to tour you anytime and just show you that progress because it's a very, very exciting project.
So definitely take you up on that.
All right.
And Travis, thank you so much for being here and answering our questions. You anticipated a lot of our questions based on previous ask as well, so I really appreciate the, the information on these projects.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you very much. I do have a motion to...
I make a motion to go ahead and approve whatever this is, A10?
My second.
A10.
Okay, A10.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any additional public comments, Scott?
We have no public comment at this time.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Change orders approved for the Performing Arts Center.
Thank you, Travis.
Next, we have B8, approve agreement between Soliant Health and LLC, Milpitas Unified School District.
So I guess I would ask, because I asked these items to be pulled, based on the feedback that we had from the public, I'm looking for direction from the superintendent and staff to determine whether or not this item should be tabled, removed for additional discussion or internal discussions with the appropriate folks in the organization and bring additional clarity.
I, I would like to have Executive Director Jordan House give an overview of what this will support.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. This position currently is, so this position is similar to the position of the supervisor position that existed before, however, that person resigned, and being a management position, we determined that we would like to move forward with the position that is not managerial. We also are in the process of having to develop a job description that would meet that need, and however, in the interim, we have our CCSEs plan that requires behavioral support at the sites to, to meet the needs of our students with, that are neurodiverse. And until we are able to get there, we put this one in place and, as a replacement coverage for the CCSEs plan and our students who have behavior support plans on their, or students who need functional behavioral assessments. This position requires somebody who has their board certification for behavioral, BCBA. And so the idea is for us to generate this. This is a projection for the entire year, should we need it for the entire year, but it is not the desire to keep it as that kind of a position.
So you're in the process of creating a job description for a teacher on special assignment to fulfill?
Yeah, we're still working with HR to determine whether that would be a certificated or a classified position because it does require the BCBA certification.
A BCBA again is board certified, I have to look that up, that's terminology, I can't remember, behavior, it's a behavior certified behavioral analysis.
So it may likely turn out to be a classified position, but it will not be a managerial position. As we are looking at cost management, we felt that we did not need to have a managerial position to cover our needs within the district.
So you said that you're still working on the description for the position, so could this be tabled to the next board meeting, or does this need to be approved tonight?
I would say tonight, that because we have the need immediately to serve our students, and so if we can have it approved with the understanding that we're working to create a, a position that can be then replaced by the, that would replace the contractor, or in lieu of the contractor.
So on the contract, is the agreement on the contract 30 days to month to month?
We, the, the contract should, the contract permits for a 30-day notification to release from the contract, so we just need to give 30 days notice. I will double-check that, but I'm pretty sure that that is accurate, that we are able to just give the notification with, with a specified number of days of warning, which we need that time to create the position and would then know the timing of that.
When do you expect to have the position's job description created?
HR, how, we, we just...
We need to work with, we do need to work with MTA, so I'm, I'm not sure, maybe a month?
We do need to work with MTA, so I'm, I'm not sure, maybe a month?
Let's amend it so that it's only through November, the end of November. And in other words, you would provide notification to them now that we expect to end the contract in the November.
Okay.
Is that doable? That gives us.
I think what you're saying is doable, I just want to remind the board that we do contract out for positions that can't be filled. And so I see this as also looking at the potential for sub, a sub in the position until it's filled. So even though we might have a job description and we might be looking for a classified or a certificated teacher on special assignment to do the work, we still need to have individual A present until that's filled. So I, I understand what you're asking, which is until November, but if we don't find a person to fill the position in November, we have to have someone in the position in December. So having that, the ability to get out of the contract we want, but also hold on to it until we have the position filled is important.
I appreciate you, you saying that, Damon, and I think the other piece is that we have to have the position created, we have to have it approved through the process, we then also have to post it and then interview and hire. So that's why I kind of looked over towards HR to see, is that really feasible?
I would ask is that the board approve it on the contingency that we will provide updates to the board at the beginning of October to let the board know where we are with this position, with this process.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. Trustee Norwood.
Yeah, I noticed, I heard Mary Jew talk about not being sure which the, what type of position it was, it was going to be certificated or classified. And then I heard Damon say, we have to talk to MTA. So I didn't, so I heard Damon saying this is on the certificated side, and then I heard Mary Jew say, we're not sure which side it's going to be on. So I, I just.
It's all true, and which is why we said we need more time to consult.
Right.
It could potentially be a certificated position in which we would need to talk to MTA, it could also end up being a CSA position, which we also have to talk with CSA to negotiate that job description.
So this wasn't, so what you're talking about wasn't because of the timing of the year, that this wasn't, what you're talking about now wasn't done before it came to a consent item? And we had a public comment about concern on the issue? Is it because there wasn't enough clarity internally about the issue? I just want to make sure, because I'm, I'm only getting bits and pieces, and I'm trying to put it all together to make a decision.
I mean, we only heard the public concern when you heard the concern. So there has been no internal dialogue about the concern that came from the public. This is the first that we've heard of it. I thought the concern was about the amount of money, and that the amount of money was greater than the managerial position that is now closed. And I think the reason is.
We can hire somebody. So, and I think the confusion between the CSA or the, the MTA is something we have to flush out because if you look at the type of position that we are trying to put in place, in some district, it is a TOSA type of position, which requires a BCBA, but they are on the certificated calendar. And in some districts, it is a BCBA position, and it falls under the classified. So we have to work with our labor associations to determine which way it was. The other piece of this that is important is that when our person resigned, we had to figure out a way to provide these services because we have students who have these services written on their IEP, and we have a CSA's plan that requires these supports and services to be provided to the school sites. And we have students who require functional behavioral assessments that requires a BCBA to be able to do that, which is why we filled the position with a contractor until we were able to meet with our associations.
Thank you.
I can speak on the cost. They did mention that the cost is a little bit more, but it's difficult for contractors to have a higher cost because we, we don't pay their medical benefits compared to our employees. So if you look at our employee salary, you have to look at the full compensation package, so you're looking at salary and benefits. So even if on the surface, it may look like it's a little bit more than what we would have paid our management position, it's because, you know, most contractors, we don't pay their benefits. We pay them a flat rate based on that, and they get no benefits at all compared to if it was a position that we will, you know, when, when they develop the job description, that, that will include hiring a person with the medical benefits. So you could kind of consider it as a wash.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Scott, are there any public comments?
There are no public comments at this time.
So the ask is to still approve the tempor, the contract for temporary services until they work it out as far as the potential backfill of the position. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Our second.
Any additional questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Item B8 is approved. Item C2, the personnel report. So if you remember correctly, it was the, the ask about the particular, the temporary HR position, and, and the feedback was that they, they believe that the HR department is fully staffed, and it wasn't necessary for the additional temporary headcount. Any thoughts?
Sure. Unfortunately, that was an incorrect statement. We do have a member that's been on leave, she's enjoying time with her family, her newborn family, and therefore, K. Dasu, who is the person, is supporting HR in filling in in her capacity. Prior to that, K. Dasu did assist in special projects. We had an executive secretary that came on board and didn't grow up in the HR world and needed some specific training on the HR aspects of the unique role that she has in supporting the HR team and also the superintendent. We also have some major cases that we are addressing that need some, some depth of work done on our HR side, and K. is supported there as well. I want you to note that the amount of money that is budgeted is if she were to work every day as a substitute employee and do special projects, but that's not the case. She currently is only putting in a half day of work, so while she's supporting somebody who's on leave, she's only working a half a day. So the amount of money that is budgeted isn't actually what's going to be expended, and she, she is planning to say goodbye to Milpitas in the near future and move on. But she's doing this because she was an analyst with us for five years, the HR position is very hard to fill, you all know how confidential the work is, and, and this was someone who knew our system and could easily support. So I would say if you asked our school sites and our departments, while we've had someone on leave, if it feels like someone's been on leave, and they would say, no, it seems very seamless in the processes. And that's because we have her on special projects.
Thank you, Damon. Scott, are there any public comments?
Oh, we have no public comment at this time.
Any additional questions, board members? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the personnel report?
Motion to approve personnel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay.
Oppose.
Oppose, okay. So we have four ayes and one nay. Got that, Scott?
Got it.
All right. Personnel report is approved. Item 20, dates of future board meetings, September 10th, tentative study session at 5:00 PM, tentative closed session, 6:00 PM, open session, 7:00 PM, hybrid on Zoom, YouTube, and here at the World, Randall World Languages School, September 24th is the subsequent board meeting. Item 21, announcements and reminders. Do we have any announcements or reminders?
It is fentanyl, it is opioid awareness week, this week. So again, we just want to be very mindful because the numbers are still going up across the country, so that makes. Assistant Executive Director.
I will say we did do a training with all of our leaders on that specifically, and no, huh? Yeah, and we did a training, and also were able to distribute naloxone to all leaders post-training in August, and there will be follow-up for our staff as well.
Thank you.
And Superintendent Jordan mentioned it's Labor Day weekend, this coming weekend. Yep. Vice President Liashawn.
Yeah, so the Chamber, Milpitas Chamber of Commerce, we are having an awards banquet to honor the Police of the Year, Fire of the Year, and other unions in, in the city Milpitas, and that's going to be on Friday, September the 13th at 5:00 PM up at Bayview. We are selling tickets. And any sponsorships are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Liashawn. Any other announcements?
We do have the Sun Hills Breakfast where our Superintendent Cheryl Jordan would be a speaker. I would love to have more community come in to educate themselves.
Thank you. September 7th.
9:00 AM.
The state of the.
In two weeks.
Yep. State of the district.
Did, was that referring to the Sunny Hills Neighborhood Association?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Looks like we got it covered. Thank you, board members and Executive Cabinet for restarting this year. We'll get the, the hangover in the rhythm. Appreciate your engagement today. With that said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Meeting is adjourned. And we also have one more.